Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson, City Manager Isaiah Hughley, Pops Barnes, District One, Glenn Davis, District Two, Bruce Huff, District Three, Toya Tucker, District Four, Charmaine Crabbe, District Five, Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem, and District Six, Mimi Woodson, District Seven, Walker Garrett, District Eight, Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor, John House, Post Ten at Large Counselor, Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council, and City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Well, welcome everyone to the council meeting, or May 10th, 2022. We have some special guests in the audience, and we will be getting to them in just a few minutes. First, we'd like to call up Reverend Joseph E. Baker of St. James AME Church to bring us our devotion.
Good morning to each and every one of you, and to our mayor in his absence, to our pro-chair of the council, and to all of you, to, I guess, Bruce Huff, who's not here. Want to say thank you for the opportunity to always serve in this capacity. Let us bow our heads. We come this morning, God, in this matter, Lord, we ask right now that you would guide us in all that we do. Bless this council, Lord, help them to be diligent, help them to be prayerful in all of the work of this great city. Help us to always come together as a community to do that which is led by you, to take care of the citizens. Those are, God, who have voice in this place. Let them represent those in our community. And this we ask, in your dear Son, Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Pastor, please share with your congregation and thank them for sharing you with us. Thank you. You'll join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our clerk, Sandra Davis, has informed me that Counselor Davis and Counselor Huff are with us virtually. So we have eight, nine in attendance here today. So, just, could I have a motion on the minutes?
Say.
Motion's second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes. A quick update on COVID. Our hospitalization numbers are down, and we're headed, and are still headed in a good direction. We'd like for everybody to keep doing what they're doing and avoid contact. If you feel funny or alarmed in any way, please get checked out. And now we will have our proclamations. Our first proclamation is National Kids to Park Day, and Counselor Crabbe will present that. Would those with parks and rec come forward? Ms. Holly?
It is my pleasure to read this into the record. Whereas Saturday, May 21st, 2022, is the 12th Annual National Kids to Parks Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas National Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks, public lands, and waters. And whereas it is important to introduce the new generation to our nation's parks because of the decline in park attendance over the last decade. And whereas children should be encouraged to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and hypercholesterolemia. And whereas National Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. Now thereby, BH Skip Henderson, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 21st, 2022, as National Kids to Parks Day.
Ms. Browder?
Good morning. Thank you so much. We appreciate the opportunity to come and see you all this morning and let the community know about how important this is for our community and the activities that we're going to host. I'm going to ask one of the staff to come up really quick and let everybody know what we're going to be doing this year for Kids to Parks Day. We're really excited, really hoping the community will come out and support us. This is about the kids. This is about, as Counselor Crabbe said, getting our kids into the parks, getting them outdoors, getting them active to stay healthy, both physically and mentally. So I'm going to ask staff really quick to come tell you what they're going to do.
Good morning. So we're going to be at Shirley Winston Park, and we're going to be there from 10 to 1:00, and it's going to be fun games. It's time for people to come together. Parents, get your kids out into the park. Show them the things that we used to do. It's going to be old-school games. It's going to be hopscotch. It's going to be tug-of-war, different things like that. We're also going to have cotton candy, the bounce houses. We're going to have foam machine. Please bring your towel, because the kids are going to get soaking wet. It's going to be a good time. We're going to have different games. Different vendors are going to be out there. And it's just going to be for a couple hours. So come out, have fun with your kids in the park. Every kid is going to leave with something. So just please come, enjoy the park, enjoy family time.
Give us your name, so your family can see you.
Oh, my name is Destiny Landers.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you all, we really appreciate it. Again, come out and see us this Saturday. Shirley Winston Park, and the time again?
10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., thank you.
Holly, thank you for all you do for our children, and you have a variety of activities across the city.
It's all these guys, it's certainly not me. It's all the staff and many more that were not able to join us today, but it's the staff that does this for the community. And so I would ask that our citizens, please take a moment and tell these staff thank you when they see them. They live their lives giving back to the community and the things that they offer. So a huge thank you to them.
Let them come to the mic and introduce themselves, so we can thank them.
Hey, good morning, I'm Sylvester Seale, Director at Shirley Winston Recreation Center.
Great. Don't be shy now.
Carolyn Evans, Blue Ellen Recreation Center. Tell everybody.
Joy Hendricks, Frank Chester Senior Center.
Hi, good morning, I'm Sharon Paton at 29th Recreation Center.
Cynthia Austin Fox Senior Center.
Chris Stala Johnson, Edgewood Senior Center.
Courtney Mason, Carver Park.
Good morning, I'm Shanika Allison, and I'm the Director at Boxway Recreation Center.
I'm Courtney Givens, and I work at Comer Gym.
Samuel Manning, Northside Recreation Center.
I'm Brian Fisher Therapeutics, Pop Off Recreation Center.
Right.
And I'm Destiny Landers, Salmerow. I didn't say the correct name, sorry. Salmerow, and May 21st, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. May 21st, May 21st.
Thank you all so much. Holly, if you'll come pick these up. And our next proclamation will be read by Counselor House. It's Park and Recreation Green Power Team Day. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Do we got the Park and Recreation Green Power team there?
We do, we have some of our team here today.
Okay, all right.
So it's a school day, so we have a few of them here today.
Okay, well, let me read the proclamation.
Absolutely.
Whereas the goal of the Green Power USA Foundation is to advance the understanding of STEM topics and inspire innovation in young people through the immersive experience of designing, building, and racing electric-powered vehicles. And whereas Green Power USA is a premier science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, or STEM program, that provides students in grades four through 12 a hands-on, project-based learning experience that engages students academically and builds critical employability skills. And whereas Green Power USA graduates high school seniors into post-secondary education and the workforce with levels of advanced manufacturing and engineering project management experience rarely found in the K-12 educational landscape. And whereas Green Power Education Trust supplies teams with a car-building kit, which can be used to build an electric racecar in school, college, or elsewhere, and then raced at Green Power organized events. And whereas on April 16th, 2022, the Parks and Recreation Green Power Team Car Number 152 competed in the Diverse Power Grand Prix Race Health in LeGraines, Georgia. And whereas the Parks and Recreation Green Power Team placed second in the F-24 Intermediate Stock Division and qualified for the inaugural F-24 National Championship Race to be held May 21st, 2022, at Talladega Superspeedway. And whereas the National Championship Races will be held on the road course, which is on the interior of the infield, Green Power USA anticipates attracting 70 teams with over 700 racers and more than 2,000 family members for the anticipated races. And whereas the mayor and city council congratulate and celebrate the Parks and Recreation Green Power Team on this special occasion. Now therefore, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 10th, 2022, as Parks and Recreation Green Power Team Day. Ms. Holly?
Yes, thank you all again. We appreciate the opportunity to bring our team before you today. Just a little bit of history for you. Our team is less than a year old. So we're super excited that they've had the opportunity to come together this year, especially after COVID, trying to get kids back engaged and involved in activities. But our team is less than a year old. So for us to be going to the Nationals in our very first year is extremely exciting. We really are looking forward to seeing these kids on the track in Talladega. But I'm going to ask their coach, who is Mr. Sam Manning, Sam is our Director at Northside, has headed up this team, done a fabulous job getting us to where we are, to talk a little bit about our team really quick, and then ask our kids to introduce themselves. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Pro Tem, Honorable Counsel. We're here, we're the Green Power Team here in Columbus, for Columbus Parks and Recreation F-24 Team. That basically means we have a group of middle-school-age kids, six through eight, and they come together, they build up a car. We teach them the concepts of engineering, aerodynamics, the importance of getting measurements right, which has been a struggle, but we're all, we're okay now. But it's been a really great time. As Holly was alluding to, we didn't really get started until after Labor Day last year. So we're less than a year old. This is our first year doing Green Power. I didn't even hear about Green Power until Holly and Mary Sherman, who's been a great supporter of us over there, came and said, hey, you're going to do our Green Power program. Okay, I guess I will. And so I am learning just as much as the kids are. So they've been really great. As soon as, you know, I figure out, hey, this is what we need to do, they go and they do it. They're doing all the hard work. I just make sure they have everything they need, all the tools, all the parts that we need, because things break down, we got to replace them. So they're learning a lot of great concepts that they wouldn't learn in a normal classroom setting, which is really great. We have gone to three races so far this year. We first had the Santa Sprints Event in downtown Columbus in December. We placed fourth. And then we did the Columbus Grand Prix, which is by the Civic Center. That was in February, we placed fifth. And then, as was read just recently, we went up to LeGraines, Georgia, just about a month ago, placed second in our division, only being beaten by the number-one team in the nation. So that was a really big difference. So for our National Championship Race, we will be at the Talladega Speedway. That will also be on May 21st. We have two heats on the schedule right now, one at 11:00 a.m. and one at 4:00 p.m. So you can go Kids at the Park Day in the morning, and then you can drive just a couple hours away, and you can see us race in the afternoon. So you can do both, it can be done. But I do want to introduce some of our team here. Not all of our team is here. The ones we have here are mostly are ones that are in charge of presentation, which they did a really good job for our last race. It is more than just racing. It is also about telling how much you've learned, what you know about the car, what you've learned about technology. So I want them to come up and introduce themselves by name, so you can see some of our kids, so.
My name is Elijah Crawford, and I'm the primary presentation preparer.
My name is Ariana Sullivan, and I'm one of the persons that help with the presentation.
My name's Edward Alphautner, and I race the car, and I'm in the pits too. And I help prepare the presentation sometimes.
Great job, very good, very good.
So as you guys can hear, obviously, it's more than just racing. From hearing you, the students speak, it's about the presentation. The presentation, they get points for that, just like they do the racing. And so what a lot of times helps teams like ours that are brand-new is our presentation skills, which are important. It's going to be important for these students in the time to come when they have to do public speaking, or they apply for a job and go for an interview. So this program is more than just about getting outside and racing a car. It's the engineering skills, the science, and math, as our coach alluded, making sure all that comes together, and then your presentation just adds to that. So that's where your points come in and how the students score. So very important for us. We think it's a great program for the city of Columbus and for our students for today and tomorrow, and for jobs here in the city of Columbus for the future. As companies look to go places, we want Columbus to be that place for them, especially when it comes to our students and their ability to have a background in engineering, STEM, and magnet, or math-type skills. So thank you all for letting us come this morning. We appreciate it, and are super excited. Hope everybody will cheer these kids on next weekend when they go to race in Talladega. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for all your leadership, Holly, and the team that you put together and the young people here today, that did a great job. Communication, giving them a variety of things to do other than just play ball, I mean, get out in the playground. The skill sets, great for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have the proclamation? We have Counselor Huff, who is virtual, would like to be recognized.
And I appreciate all the hard work and the effort at you and our teams. And I look forward to trying to make the drive on the 21st to see you and the teams that we have represented. This is going to be a great endeavor for our kids as far as the engineering technology program, future jobs, but also their ability to put together the presentations, or their writing skills and presentation skills. And for those that don't understand, I think it's... Director Browder, correct me if I'm wrong, but half of your score is dependent upon your presentation, and the other half upon racing. So it creates a great team concept. So I appreciate you and everyone for participating. I'm always coming to you with more ideas with the team of people that I work with. So thank you and everyone that works with you. And I look forward to you all bringing home the trophy. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Thomas?
Coach, do these kids go to the same school?
So unlike most teams, we are not based in a single school. I have kids from all over the city. Some are in some of the nearby public schools. Some of them are homeschooled. So a lot of them don't know each other or haven't met each other before joining this team. So they've all become fast friends. It's been a great experience.
Where do these kids go to school?
Edward, I believe, is at Veterans Memorial, and Elijah and Ariana are both homeschooled.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Thomas, I just have to say, we are the only team that we know of that is operated in the way we are. So most of the teams that we compete with, they do this as their daily class. So they have a class in their school, whatever grade they're in, on STEM or engineering. And so they take that class all year long. So obviously, if they have that much time to devote every day in a classroom, they're always going to be a lot stronger. So that's what makes our team even more special, because our kids are comprised of all over the city of Columbus, not just one school or not just one area. We represent the city of Columbus and the Parks and Rec Department here, here in Columbus. And so we feel like our team is more special than anyone else. We're a little biased in that way. But what a great group of students to be able to come together, who don't sit in a classroom day in and day out, and to be able to put their heads together, build this car, and then get on the track and race it, and then same for their presentation. So kudos to these guys, they are fabulous.
That's great, that's great. Counselor Woodson?
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you to the coach and to Holly, Director. Can you tell us how other children that would be interested in being part of this program, you know, next year or during the summer? I was going to ask the same question, but Judy beat me, so I'm going to do part two to it. How can other children, you know, be a part of it? Because this is new to me, and I need to tell you that it's outstanding. You never seem to amaze me with something new every time and unique. And I tend to agree with you. I'm very proud, because this is one of a kind and one in the city. And you're doing exactly like Isaiah always says, we want to be the first and shine. And there you are, you're being the first and shining in a program where you have somewhat diverse children from all over. And they don't have the same opportunities as children in school, but you've given them that opportunity.
Yes, ma'am. That's the thing about it. Parks and Recreation is not just sports. A lot of people think that that's just all we do. But not every child plays sports. Every kid is different, every kid has different interests, backgrounds, et cetera. And so this is another opportunity for us to be able to support that, for kids to have that opportunity. So if there's other kids in the community that want to participate, the coach and I were just having a conversation in the back this morning. I had a student who reached out to me yesterday from one of the local high schools and wanted to participate. Just have the students contact our department, and we'll put them in touch with the coach if they're not able to reach out to Northside. We'll make that happen. As a conversation we had this morning, we were trying to figure out if we could do two cars. We'd love to keep our middle-school team, but now the student that reached out is a high-school student, and there's a high-school division. And so we would love to be able to fund a high-school team as well. And so, and do it in the same facet, same way. We don't have to have a school team. We can have a team of the community. And so I've actually sent an email back to that young man and said, hey, reach out to us. It's a little too late for this year, but we'll start working on next season. So we would love to have you. Please reach out to us, and we'll get you on the team if that's something you want to do. We do have an application process. It's just like anything else. We're making sure that everybody's a good fit. But overwhelmingly, it's just about getting the students engaged and involved and active in activities here in the community, regardless of what their interest is. And as you can see, there's a lot of different jobs. The young man who stood up and told you he's a driver, well, yeah, it's important that we have a driver, but it's also just as important that we have the person behind the camera taking photos or doing their PowerPoint presentation or video or whatever else. Every job is essential when it comes to... And I think about the city. We have so many different jobs, and it's the same as with their team.
Well, I want to say to you and coach and to the young people, congratulations. It's great to see this and hear this. Unfortunately, I won't be able to attend. That's the day we're celebrating my mom's life. My mom passed during COVID, and we weren't able to bury her or celebrate or anything. And we're finally going to come together as a family to do it. So I apologize. If it wasn't for that, I'll spend the whole day with you guys, because I think it's so cool. But let me, are you going to put it on Facebook or anything like that, and I can watch it later?
Yes, I'm sure we will. I'm sure that if you go out to our last race, there was video that they were able to capture and post, as well as pictures of the day. So absolutely, we try to do a really good job of that, because we understand not everyone can make the trip. So yes, ma'am.
Well, good luck to y'all, and thank you so much. God bless you both.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck to y'all.
Thank you.
And our next proclamation is National EMS Week, and I thank Counselor Barnes.
Here we go. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Counsel. It's my pleasure to read this proclamation. And this proclamation reads thusly. It says, whereas since December the 17th, 1972, Columbus Technical College's Emergency Medical Education Program is a leader in vocational education. And whereas the 47th Annual National EMS Week is May 15th through May the 21st, 2022, Columbus Technical College, located in Columbus, Georgia, will celebrate, authorized in 1974 by President Roe Ford, to celebrate EMS practitioners and the important work they do in our nation's communities. And whereas Columbus Technical College strives to prepare competent entry-level paramedics, emergency medical technicians, and advanced emergency medical technicians in the cognitive, knowledge, psychomotor skills, and affective behavior learning domains. And whereas Columbus Technical College's Emergency Medical Education Program values relationships with local emergency medical services, hospitals, healthcare facilities, and the community. And whereas a relationship that provides students with a practical application driven by learning experience through innovation, best practices, and real-life educational experience. And whereas Columbus Technical College's Emergency Medical Education Program is a student-centered educational program that meets the unique career challenges of individuals in an emergency medical healthcare profession. And whereas Columbus Technical College's Emergency Medical Education Program values its relationship with those healthcare providers who care for the sick and injured in our community and wish to recognize these persons for their dedication and also for their professionalism. And whereas Columbus Technical College's Emergency Medical Education Program values its relationship with other providers who care for the sick and injured in our communities. And whereas the mayor and city council recognize Columbus Technical College's Emergency Medical Education Programs for the educational opportunities provided to the community and healthcare providers. Now therefore, the Honorable Mayor of Columbus, Georgia,[1676.44] Now, therefore, the Honorable Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, V.H. Skip Henderson, does hereby proclaim this week, May 15th to the 22nd, 2022, as National EMS Week in the city of Columbus, Georgia.
Thank you all. I mean, council has always been such a great support to the EMS community and just us providing that education. It's an honor in the first place. And I kind of wrote down a lot of folks because it's a great support that we get from everybody. It's a big team. I mean, Pops Barnes, I can't tell you throughout all the career EMS, how much he's done for us, even when I was with the fire department. So, and he's just continued that on with our part at Columbus Tech. Just to let you know, our faculty and staff is such a great support. Martha Antois, she's our president. We have Carmel Hensley, our Assistant President. Matt Dennis is our dean. We also have Betsy Bishop over there taking pictures. She sends out all the public announcements that we can get. You know, we're trying to give people in the community to know what we offer there. And we offer a lot through the programs. And plus, we're working real well with the different departments there. And there's several EMS services here. Columbus Fire Department works well with us and all the other services. Just not to leave them out, our instructors are Paula Carter, Frank Perez, Leon Aaronheim, Melissa Gordy, Greg Garner, Tyler Gooch, Shannon Winkle, Nate Delgado, and Daniel Sparks. And all those, it's a great team. I mean, it's a team that has to be put together to teach future EMS providers. Yeah, because the way I tell the students is, I'm not getting any younger. And when I look up, I want to see, oh, that's one of my students. That's great. So, two of my students now are supervisors over me in Harris County. So, that must say something. I'm proud of them. But this is our president. Only her talks.
Thank you. That was Gary Metcalf, who is our program director at Columbus Technical College. We just want to say thank you for all the support of the city, the city council, all of our legislators. There are a number of them here today, our state representatives and senators and our local board members. There are a number of those in the audience and on the council tables, too. So, thank you for all the support the community gives to Columbus Technical College for the fire and EMS program and all the programs that we offer. Send us some students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all you do, Martha and Todd. We appreciate you being in Columbus and the leadership you're displaying at Columbus Tech. And we thank all you, all those here. Would you like to come up and introduce yourselves again, just for the record?
Good morning. Carmel Hensley, Vice President of Academic Affairs.
I'm Matt Dennis, the dean for Health Science and Nursing.
And good morning. My name is Denise Wells. I am the Executive Director for Public Relations and Communications.
Great, great. Thank you all so much.
Mayor Protem and counsel.
Yes, sir.
One of the many gems that we have here in Columbus, Georgia is Columbus Technical College. I was really amazed when I went through with Gary and Dr. Dennis, at all that they have. They, I mean, it's just mind-boggling, the technology that they have nowadays to teach our nursing students. And they have the only three semester, correct me if I'm wrong, three semester registered nursing program now to cover everything in nursing in three semesters. Every student there has to be exceptional because, trust me, I know just how difficult nursing school can be. So, to be able to do it in three semesters is just awesome. And when I toured the labs, they even have, they have mannequins that can do everything that we can. They breathe. You can, if you want to check their pedopulses in the feet. They even have a mannequin that gives birth. Now, you want to see something that blows your mind, that blows your mind. And so, it's one of the gems. And Dr. Dennis, if I could just have you just come here and just mention something, because the community needs to know about this. And you want to know something? A school like Columbus Tech gave me my beginning, an opportunity to move forward in upward mobility and contribute more to the community. But would you just speak on some of the allied health
Sure.
careers that you have?
Again, thank you, Pop Barnes. We have dental hygiene. We have respiratory therapy, surgical technology, of course, nursing, diostomy, stenography, paramedicine, pharmacy technology. I mean, we got a gamut of allied nursing or allied health programs there. But our big thing is the hands-on, like Pops was talking about, was simulation. And we want our students to be able to do everything before they go out to the hospitals and do their clinicals. So, with the support of the president, we've bought all kinds of simulation mannequins, augmented reality goggles. So, I mean, everything we can do for the students to get them prepared for what they're going to encounter when they go to the hospitals we have there, in our labs. So, it's a great opportunity, a great learning opportunity for our students in the community.
And just thank you so much for all that you all do.
Thank you.
The future is bright if they'll come and put an application in, right? You can prepare them for whatever variety of jobs they would, skills they'd like to explore.
You'll get a job.
Yeah. They're out there. Thank you again for all you do. Appreciate that.
You have to get your proclamation.
Martha Ann, I forgot.
You can't forget that now.
As I mentioned earlier, we have some special guests here today. It's good to see some familiar faces and appreciate all the work that y'all do for Columbus, Georgia. The legislative delegation is here, and I think Representative Calvin Smyrie is going to brief us on the legislature for this session this year. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem Allen. It's great to be here and to see the members of the city council. This is members of the city council, to the city attorney, to the city manager. And it's a delight to be here this morning. My colleagues are here with me. And they say I'm on my own today because this is my last time. But Chairman Richard Smith, Representative Carolyn Hughley, Chairman Senator Ed Harbison, Representative Van Smith, and Senator Miranda Robertson. And Debbie Buckner wanted to be here, but she's out of town today. So, if y'all would, would y'all please give the delegation a round of applause? They work with me over the years and I work with them, and we've had a great relationship and we will continue to do so. And this is my 17th time since 2005, when I became Chair of the delegation. And I'm honored to be here today. And I'm really pleased to see all the people that come and that y'all honored this morning, especially those in the healthcare and then the parking rec. They all do such a tremendous job. I see these young people here, and that's what it's all about. And I want to thank the citizens of Columbus who are tuning in today for allowing me to serve them for 48 years. And the Georgia House of Representatives, I'm deep on, oh, how you doing, Mr. Mayor?
Sorry I'm late, sir.
That's okay. That's okay. But I've given y'all a little rough draft of what we, what we're going to talk about here. Please just hold these and we're going to email them to you in a very corrected form. There are some typos and things that we have to correct. But I do want to say I enjoy working with Clifton Fay and Lucy Chestall and members of your staff there. And we attempted to do something about the 18 items that you all sent us, and I'm not going to drill very heavy. I'm going to do them very, very quickly in that it's a lot to talk about. But the first one is the county's special local option sales tax maintenance reserve. We did introduce a bill in 2021. It was referred to Ways and Means, and there was no hearing held on that particular piece of legislation. Reciprocal sovereign immunity, we thought about a resolution, but the delegation will support the position of the city council. So, we were standing firm in, as it relates to that matter. The update and redefine the healthcare purposes for the healthcare levy of up to three meals of avalorum tax. That was something that was introduced, and that's something that I had a lot of discussion with the city manager and the city attorney. We were able to get House Bill 1418 passed. We were told that's a major issue for the city of Columbus as it relates to healthcare and energy care and the levy of additional meals of property tax. So, House Bill 1418 was introduced by the delegation that passed both the House and Senate and has been signed by the governor. So, that is one that we were able to get across the finish line. The one dealing with the reschedule of the 2022 primary, of course, that's non-applicable. Now, we're in the election season, and that's something that the delegation and members of the General Assembly were not moving on that particular issue as we are in the election season, as we speak. Funding for behavioral health, addictive disease and developmental disability, that is a budget item. We're going to continue to keep working in the arena of healthcare and disabilities and physical and mental health. And of course, this session under the leadership of Speaker David Ross, we passed the most sweeping mental health reform that the state has seen. And that's something that I want to commend the members of the delegation for their effort in passing. And that's probably one of the most significant pieces of legislation that we've passed in a long, long time. That is elevating mental health to the same position of physical health and putting money, I think, somewhere near $100 million went into the mental health reform. And that's something that we are all very proud of as a state and as a delegation. Designation of the week of September 11th as Public Safety Week, we were able to pass that particular piece of legislation. Of course, September 11th is the day that we all, that's etched in the mind of all Americans. And I think that's very appropriate for us to do that. And in doing that, the bill to create the Juneteenth, when I called the city manager about this, he made me realize that Columbus already observed Juneteenth as a holiday. But now, with this public safety bill, the governor wanted to establish another state holiday, which will increase from 12 to 13 state holidays. And now, Juneteenth as a part of that bill, House Bill 1335, it's been signed into law. And I was able to visit with the governor, and that bill was signed, where now we will have a Public Safety Week and Juneteenth state holiday as well. Adoption of statewide non-discrimination ordinance, that's something that you all have dealt with, dealt with a non-discrimination ordinance. I had a lot of talk with our legal counsel about that and discussed with the city attorney in depth. And we thought about creating a possible study committee to look at this issue, but the budget, I mean, the legal counsel felt that that was something that would take some time. And we just didn't create many study committees this legislative session. And so, we forego that. And that's something that can be looked at in 2023. Well, I heard the rules chairman said something about, I had to talk to the rules chairman when we talked about study committees, of course, they do have to go through rules. So, but that's something that somebody else will be dealing with in 2023. Medical assistance program, assistance senior, that is another state budget item. And but we introduced and referred a bill to Health and Human Services. There was nothing done that relates to that. And I've been, we've been working with the State Department in that regard, but the bill received no hearing. The treatment and care of Georgia's abused and neglected children residential settings, that is another budget item, and that's something that we will continue to look at, trying to increase the pre-dim funding appropriate to the state of Georgia. That was a small pre-dim increase, and we will continue to work on that and getting that adjusted as accordingly. Sales tax accountability and transparency, user safeguard, point-of-sales contact data, that's something that we have been working with you all for a long time. The Department of Revenue, Representative Buckner and Representative Hughley have had a lot of dialogue with them, and we will continue to have the dialogue with the Department of Revenue. But they tell us all the time, that is information that is already available. And so, that is something that we will continue to have dialogue on, on the point-of-sales data. Opposed preemptive regulation of pet sales by local government, the delegation took a position that if that came up, we would oppose it as well. But nothing came along in that arena. So, but we did take a position to oppose that based on the resolution that we received from the city council. Personal care homes, we know that this is something that you all deal with all the time. Representative Hughley has been involved in that. In fact, she had a town hall on that subject matter with the Muscoe County School Board. And that's something that we're going to continue to look at. That is a statewide measure. A bill was introduced by the delegation, House Bill 694. It was introduced and referred to Health and Human Services, and there was no hearing held on that particular legislation. Public utilities and public water system reservoirs, there were several meetings held to look at this issue. Representative Buckner and Representative Van Smith worked with Georgia Power and met with them on several occasions and also had meetings with EPA to discuss the runoff on construction sites. So, that's something that we're going to continue to look at, but this time, no legislation was created, attempted to be introduced. Residential drug abuse treatment centers, that's something that y'all requested us to look at statewide legislation that would require prompt notification of county and city police. And we think that is something that we need to continue to look at. We did introduce a bill. It was introduced and last session referred to Health and Human Services, and there was no hearing held on that one as well. Same thing goes for personal care homes that require minimal staffing. That's something that Counselor Glenn Davis and I think Counselor Barnes have mentioned that as well. This is something that was a carryout from 2021. The department has told us they have legislative options to do that through the Administrative Procedure Act. And so, that's something that we're going to continue to monitor as well. Casino gaming referendum, the Senate passed something in their wisdom, and they sent us Senate Resolution 135. We tried everything we could. We had sports betting and casino at the same time, and we were trying to work and do a wraparound and have the casino bill and sports betting in the same constitutional amendment. But what came to, we just could not come to grips with the various entities in both the caucuses of the General Assembly, and we just could not come to grips with it. And I particularly wanted, we had looked at sports betting and casinos for the last seven years, and we were hoping to be able to get something. But because of the various opinions in the General Assembly, we could not come to grips with that. We were going to be doing that to increase hope, scholarship funding. But that's something that will always probably be contentious in the Georgia General Assembly, and that is a constitution amendment creating the avenue to have sports betting and casinos, designated resorts throughout the city. Theatrical performance, request of lower delegation, this is something to reduce the spending threshold from half a million to $100,000 for musical and theatrical performances. That's something that Counselor Judy Thomas had mentioned to us and you all had mentioned. And we tried as hard as we could. We passed a bill. We had House Bill 718 that was introduced, and we came back, that was in 2021, and we came back. And with the help of some members of the Ways and Means Committee of the House, Chairman Blackwell and Chairman Williamson, we were able to introduce, I mean, House Bill 1330. We got it passed the House to lower the threshold because of the River Center, the threshold now is half a million dollars. And of course, the only person, only organization that could realize any benefits from that would be the Fox Theater and holding events, something like a Hamilton that requires a lot of outlay of capital. But we wanted to pass this badly for our Columbus, out of the jewel we have at the Columbus River Center so that they could have theatrical performance and be able to get this tax credit as well. And it passed the House, and we just could not get it through the Senate. There was a lot of issues dealing with transferability on the licensures and things of that nature. And we just could not work out our differences between the House and the Senate. And of course, it failed in the Senate. And I hope that's something that the delegation will continue to push and hopefully we can get that passed so our own Rivers, Columbus River Center can bring these productions and get the tax credit as well. The last item is the corn-operated amusement machines. That's something that has statewide application and would require a general bill. And that's something that we know you have to, you have a lot of issues with that. And we wanted to, we feel the sentiment of helping y'all broaden y'all local application and your local governance because we know that this is an issue not only in Columbus but across the state. And we hear it all the time. And hopefully, that is something that we can continue to look at and assist our local governments as it relates to the operation of these corn-operated machines that are in our convenience stores and places of business. So, those were the items that you all brought to us. And I do want to mention a couple of others because military retiree pay is a major. Most of you all were at the signing with the governor as it relates to military retiree pay. But Richard Smith and Ed Harbison have been working on that for so long. And in fact, Congressman Bishop had introduced a bill when he was in the state legislation. I want to commend both of them for their effort. And we've had bills and you all, it's been in your legislative delegation package to us for many, many years. And those two have been working very, very hard to get that. And now, it comes to fruition. It's been such a steep hill because of the budget hole that it creates. We had to have the cash of maybe $150 million. And we were able now to do that. And it will be so helpful to the citizens of Columbus, Georgia and to our community because Georgia, and to our community, because, uh, it, it is an incentive to keep people in Columbus and, and for them not to move to a contiguous state where they, they are afforded retirement pay. So that's, uh, that's another item, and then last item I want to mention is the, um, funding for the Mercer University, and I want to thank, uh, Richard Smith and of course, the late Pete Robinson for their effort in doing that. I've been told that when you establish a medical school in your community and you have a campus, it's transformational, and, uh, and that's, that's what I think the Mercer School of Medicine brings to Columbus, and I want to thank, uh, uh, the late Pete Robinson and Senator Robinson and, uh, and Richard Smith for that, and the entire Columbus delegation working on that. We put, we had put nine point three in there to help them get open, now we put another one point one million there for the Mercer School of Medicine, and we also put three million in for the, uh, Morehouse School of Medicine to establish a campus here, so that their resident students can have a place to operate on, so that was something that the General Assembly thought would be well. So we will have Mercer Medical School Campus here and the Morehouse, uh, School of Medicine residents and students here as well, and, and we've been working with the chamber, uh, through a, a collaborative agreement to continue to assist both, uh, both of those institutions. And the last thing I want to mention, that psychiatric care, we've been, that's, that's a major issue in our community, and we were able to, to put some funding, and you all have asked for this in, in prior legislative delegation requests for us to put money in, in psychiatric care, and we put some funding in for the, uh, the Bradley Center and to assist, uh, St. Francis Hospital, uh, in their, in their efforts to, to, uh, to, to deliver those types of services. And so I want to, I want to thank the members of the delegation, Representative Hughley, Representative Van Smith, Representative Chairman Richard Smith, Senator Ed Harbison, and Senator Robinson again, and Representative Buckner for the, uh, dynamic job they did. This was a, uh, a tough legislative session, we, we, we are back on the floor of the House now under the COVID guidelines, uh, we, we've been scattered in three locations in the Capitol, but we felt some sort of, uh, of, uh, kinship this time to be able to operate in, and there's nothing, anything else such as normalcy, but as far as normalcy that we could, we could get under, under the conditions, and something that we have to continue to live with, uh, under COVID and, and the pandemic. So, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, that is a brief, um, uh, description of, um, of the things that we have had, uh, to deal with, and I, I consider it a, we had a great session, and, uh, we all, you know, I, I always ask people, you know, our, our, our delegation gets a lot of accolades, and people say, how are, are Columbus so, uh, able to do so much and, and get so much accomplished, because they say, we speak with one voice. And to me, I have known that to be for forty years, and it continues to this day, that we as a delegation, Republicans and Democrats, differences in our opinion, but yet we try to be collective and be deliberate in how we conduct ourselves as it relates to the citizens of Columbus, Georgia, and how we try to, try to conduct our business in a, in a very civil, in a civility way. So, again, thank you, and I want to thank the city manager, uh, for his efforts and all that he does for the city and the citizens of Columbus, and I could not leave this podium without thanking Clifton Fay. He has been yeoman, he talks, uh, quite often to the, our, our legislative and legal council here in Lucian, and I'm just honored and to be able to work with him, uh, to be able to try to do things on behalf of the citizens of Columbus, Georgia. In fact, that's what we all try to do, is try to plant seeds to trees for the shade we may never see. So that's, that's what we all should be doing as public officials and trying to, to uplift others and try to provide a better quality of life. So.
Yes, sir.
I don't talk my time out.
Well, I dare say that some of the seeds you planted are already fully grown trees after forty years, and, uh, and there's a lot of folks enjoying that shade, and we appreciate you as an individual, but, but I will tell you, and I'll tell the whole delegation, that, that what you just touched on is a real source of pride for this community, and that is the way our delegation, uh, presents themselves in a unified, uh, way, uh, when, when, uh, when they're doing the work of the people of this community. And it, uh, again, it, it makes us exceptionally proud, uh, to live, to live in, in this, uh, in this region because of the way you do your, your jobs, and we, we thank you, and, and we, we're frankly, very grateful that, uh, the delegation always finds time to come and, and give us a, a, a brief update, not just council, but the citizens of Columbus, Georgia, who are watching this as well, and that's, that's significant, the transparency that, that, that you as a delegation insist on and, and that we assist with, is critical, I think, to, uh, to, to continuing to help you do what you do for the citizens of this community. This is a kind of a milestone report, because this will be the last one that you, you provide us, but, uh.
Thank you very much.
Well, we, we are grateful for, for the way you have, uh, you have represented this, this community, and, uh, and we are, uh, our prayers go with you wherever your road may lead, and I think we know where it leads, and you probably have a lot of folks knocking on the door wanting to visit.
And I want to thank Ms. Johnson, uh, Yasha Johnson, she's the person that, that I, I talk with and that I, I'm connected to more, you know, I talk to her more than I talk to the city manager, and she, and she is phenomenal, she does a great job, and I thank her for just always keeping me, uh, up to date. The older you get, the more your memory fades, you know what I mean, but she kind of helps me and bring me back to reality, but, but, uh, so I want to thank, I don't know if she's here or not, but I, okay, thank you very much, uh, for, for all that you do, and, uh, and then we want to congratulate councilwoman, listen for your service, members of the delegation, but thank you for your service on the council, and wish you best wishes.
Have a few, have a few comments, Representative Smirey, Councilor Thomas.
Representative Smirey, you touched on, um, the funding that the delegation brought back for, uh, the Mercer, uh, school. I know that there were other things that were not on our legislative delegation, but that the, the, um, our representatives, our, uh, brought back, uh, Columbus Tech got a, a good bit. Can you give us some of those, uh, items? I know, uh, the infantry museum, um, we like to know that that money's coming back to us.
I think the governor's going to sign the budget, uh, Tuesday, I mean, excuse me, Thursday. Um, right now, I think we put one point three in for the, uh, Columbus Tech. She's told me the other day that she expects a lot more this next budget. But, uh, we, we had to get the process started. Um, two, uh, two point eight for the, uh, National Infantry Museum, I think there was over three for the Bradley Center, uh, and I, Representative Smirey said, uh, three for Morehouse and then, uh, for Mercer. So, um, we had a, Columbus had a really good year, and as a matter of fact, we had a outstanding bu- uh, year in the legislature.
Well, we certainly do appreciate all the efforts of, of all of you folks to bring that money back to Columbus. It will be well spent, and Representative Smirey, I'm going to take this opportunity to, uh, add my thanks, uh, to you for your years of service in the legislature. It's, it's always nice to know that if you need somebody, there's somebody there you can call. You may not call them all the time, but they, he's there if you need him, and I really appreciate having that, um, connection with you and with the rest of the delegation, really. Uh, and I wish you well, uh, and if, you know, you need somebody to go down to the beach and, you know, I, we could probably get up a crowd, so, uh, thanks again, Representative Smirey, for all your work.
Uh, Ms. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, before we all get choked up, I just wanted to say publicly, again, thank you to Dean Calvin Smirey. Uh, we have worked on a heck of a lot of local legislation over thirty years, uh, together, back and forth, um, some of it critical to Columbus, like the second penny sales tax legislation that kept our momentum going, and this year, the healthcare funding bill, that's going to be critical for the next thirty years, but I just want to say thank you and thank all the team again for all you do for us. Um, I am going to miss seeing the tag on the back of Dean Smirey's car that said State Representative, as it would blow by me coming back from the Braves, Braves game about one in the morning, we would see that tag every now and then, and he was headed back to Columbus after the game, but we'll keep cheering, and I know you'll keep watching at your new post, but thank you again.
Thank you very much. I try to be a lawmaker, not a lawbreaker.
Counselor Woodson?
I need to slow it down, yeah.
Representative Carrion, I want to say thank you for those well wishes for me, but thank you for all you have done. From the moment I have, um, was elected to the seat, you have been a mentor, and I appreciate that. Um, we always didn't agree, but we respected each other's opinion, and you helped me to grow to be who I am today, and I appreciate that from the bottom of my heart. And for Judy, I'm sorry, Judy, I speak Spanish, I'm being his translator, I'm going to the beach, because I'll be retired, so I'm ready and I have my suitcase ready. Habla español? Yo sí, te ayudo. So I'll be right next to you, I'll carry your suitcases. Republicans. God bless you and best wishes.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, Mayor Potem?
Thank you, Mayor. Representative Calvin Smirey, uh, we go back a long time, and it's been a pleasure. I know we've been on opposite sides politically a few times, but more recently, we've walked arm in arm in trying to accomplish a lot for Columbus, and my hat's off to you for all you've done and your leadership, uh, and I wish you the best going forward. If there's anything else, anything I can do in the future, please don't hesitate to call on me. Thank you for your friendship.
Thank you very much.
Mr. City Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to take this opportunity to thank Representative Calvin Smirey, uh, for all that he has done for Columbus, uh, down through the years. Um, I mean, we could go back to, uh, his service with, um, Tom Buck and Pete Robinson, and, you know, we can, um, bring the whole list forward, and, uh, we're fortunate, uh, to have even today, you're working with the Chair of the Rules, uh, that little small committee that, you know, they don't do very much, but, you know, but, but Representative Richard Smith, we're proud of him as well, but thank you, Representative Smirey, for, for all that, uh, you have done for our city, and I know that you're going to go on and do great things and continue to represent, um, Columbus, Georgia, but I want you to remember one thing, uh, as you go off to do, uh, what you're about to do for Columbus and for the, the country, if you see a turtle sitting on a fence pole, I want you to remember, he didn't get there by himself. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I, I, you mentioned Chairman Smith, and, and I'm so glad we have a good friendship, a true friendship, because I wore him out this session, I mean, because I had a lot going on, and, uh, he was very receptive, and, uh, you can't get anything passed, I mean, the Rules Committee is the gateway, so.
Counselor, uh, Counselor Barnes?
Representative Smirey, Isaiah stole my line, I wrote it down here, but he's thinking faster than I. Um, the Bible says, let the works that I do speak for me, and you have truly left a legacy here in Columbus, Georgia. You've done so much. Forty-eight years is a long time to serve, but you, you stayed the course and you've done so much, and so you have left a legacy. The works that you have done definitely speaks for you. Thank you so much for your dedication and for your service and, and for your leadership.
Thank you. You're my councilman, I appreciate you.
Counselor Tucker?
Dean Smirey, I want to say thank you. You're more like a uncle to me, you know, I call you Uncle Calvin. I appreciate you for just bringing me in and sitting down and having true conversations with me as a newly-elected official, and also just opening the door to other opportunities. I appreciate everything that you have done for me from the bottom of my heart, to the point for you, um, welcoming me up to Atlanta and letting me go to John Lewis, um, Wake, um, for me, bringing me up to the legislation, um, Legislative Conference and introducing me to so many other great leaders. They admire you, they appreciate you, I saw just so much, like a whole different point of view when I came up to Atlanta and was able to hang out with you for, for a couple of days, but I truly appreciate you, um, and I'm going to miss you, but we coming to the beach. Look, hello, somebody.
Counselor Garrett?
I also plan to come visit you at the beach. I've nev- I've never gotten to, I've never gotten to visit with an ambassador on vacation, so I would like to, uh, come visit, but thank you so much for all of your service to our community. Uh, you've been a great example, somebody I followed since I was a kid, then I had lobbying before I got on council where I interacted with you, and then got to interact with you since I've been on council, and it's been just a true honor to work with you, and we are lucky as a state to have you, and, uh, the Dominican Republic will be very lucky to have you as well.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Councilman Garrett. Representative Smirey, we've got Counselor Huff who's joining us virtually, and he wanted to make a comment as well, I believe. Counselor Huff?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Representative Calvin Smirey, the dean of the delegation, let me first thank you for your service and the rest of the delegation with you before I forget, because we do have to work with them the year, next year and the year after. So thank you to the entire delegation for all your hard work and everything that you've done. Um, I appreciate the comments you made about the Rules Committee, because I've had conversations with Representative Smith over the years, and he's explained to me how things work, so I appreciate that, that, that end, that end, that lesson to how things work at the, at the state level. But on your part, thank you, and I want you to look around the room for a minute and think about this. The city attorney, the city manager, and myself were both high school students when you were elected, and we have had the opportunity, we have had the opportunity to kind of grow with you and grow into being in the same room with you and being able to work with you, and I'm sure we all possibly, the city attorney had an idea that he was going into law, but I don't know about the city manager, but myself had no idea that I'd ever be a, an elected official and sitting in the room working with you. So I appreciate you for all the days and nights that we spoke about many, many different issues and your guidance on doing things the proper way, and it's the proper way, as we say, is the Columbus way. The delegation sticks together, it's always been one voice, and for those that didn't understand it, they learned it fast. So thank you so very much, I wish you very well on your endeavors, uh, please reach out to us and let us know what's going on, and while everyone wants to come and visit, I do too, but a- as, as, as Mom and Daddy used to say, reach out to you and make sure you, you extend the hospitality that's a good time to come. So thank you so much, uh, God's blessings, God's speed, uh, if you need anything here, you always know you can give us a call. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Huff, for those kind remarks, and, you know, I, I'd be called Dean Smirey, but we have another dean in here. He's the dean of the Senate, so you'll still have somebody to be able to call dean, and, uh, we appreciate his service as well, and, uh, but thank y'all for those kind remarks.
Well, thank you for the manner in which you serve the people of this community, uh, we, we appreciate that. I, I will say, I, I, uh, somebody, we were talking to somebody about what you had meant to this community, and we started recounting all of the different, uh, initiatives that you have been a part of, and I said, he's, he's like a five-year-old with a chocolate bar, his fingerprints are everywhere, so he's, we appreciate your fingerprints being on everything in this community and helping us, uh, helping us grow like we have, so thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I, I did want to offer, I don't know if any of the other members of the delegation wanted to make a comment, I know we've heard from most of them, and, yes, yes, absolutely.
Well, I, I will take thirty seconds and say thank you very much for your hospitality, your professional work and the way you work hard for the city of Columbus and, and, and the work you do sometimes, I know it's unappreciated, but you got people like myself and the people who understand how tough government work is, we appreciate everything you do. And finally, for my, uh, dean of the House, Representative Smirey, we certainly appreciate his legacy and the things he's going to do in the future. He puts, uh, responsibility before the star, he pins on his chest, so we're so grateful we have that, uh, even approach to his government work. Thank you, and God bless you. Thank you so much.
Thanks, sir. Thanks, sir.
Can we get a picture?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, absolutely. You'll come, come on. We are indeed very appreciative of the work that our legislative delegation does, as should be the, all the residents of Muskogee County. All right, we appreciate that legislative session update. We have another update scheduled this morning, the Development Authority update. CEO, President Gerald Mitchell of the Greater Columbus Chamber of Commerce is going to deliver that update. But prior to that, you know, economic development takes on a lot of different forms. And I don't know how many of you have seen recently a couple of stories done. And I'm gonna turn it over to the city manager, because I think we're gonna be able to show one or two of those clips before Mr. Mitchell gets started.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just say that yesterday I was watching the morning news and saw a story by Ashley Williams from WTVM News about Uptown Development. And I mentioned it to the mayor and the mayor Protem yesterday and knew that the president, CEO of the chamber was coming. And so I asked staff if they would pull that video from Ashley Williams WTVM News about Uptown Development, because it just reminds us that the Columbus, Georgia momentum remains strong. We see a hotel here, a hotel there, a restaurant here, a restaurant there, retail, park, multifamily development, all in Uptown, and the list goes on. And I thought about the fact that the Civic Center and the Trade Center, they've both reported to us in recent weeks, as we know, that their bookings for events and conventions have exceeded pre-pandemic levels at both the Civic Center and the Trade Center. Their bookings and conventions have exceeded pre-pandemic level. And so our momentum is strong, and this is exciting for Columbus, Georgia. And I'm gonna ask that they roll this video before the president, CEO of the chamber speak.
With locally-owned restaurants and businesses, to boutique event spaces and wide-water rafting, all within walking distance of the Chattahoochee River, Uptown Columbus continuing to take strides toward progress and transformation. This, all thanks to several people in Columbus who saw potential and invested in the once-blighted part of the Fountain City. In Newsletter 9 exclusive, I talked with a few of these passionate idealists who are working on several projects right now that will continue to put Columbus higher on the map as a destination city to live, work, visit, and play. This is part one of a two-part series.
If we can develop a downtown that would attract a business to Columbus rather than to Atlanta or Nashville or Chattanooga, then we're gonna see some growth, and what we're doing now is just the tip of the iceberg.
You can breathe into Columbus something that we haven't seen before.
All of us are passionate about our individual projects, but we're all happy and excited for one another because everything feeds off of one another.
Investment in Uptown, and it's good for the community, and we believe it'll provide long-lasting economic benefits to our great city.
You may remember years ago, Uptown Columbus, formerly known as Downtown, was a part of the Fountain City most people avoided. But thanks to legacy donors and several passionate business owners and developers, that all quickly changed. And they tell me today, this is just the start. President and Chief Operating Officer of W.C. Bradley Real Estate, Pace Halter, is overseeing the largest real estate development in Uptown Columbus's history, when completed a more than $250 million investment. The mixed-use development includes approximately 1.1 million square feet located on the corner of 13th Street and Broadway, named Riverfront Place.
It's very rare in this process that you know on the front end going in what the outcome is going to be, but more importantly, who's going to occupy those spaces, both in the residence and in this case for the office building. Every now and then, you're fortunate enough to have a tenant involved as you go into a project, and that's a very unique experience.
In this case, Halter is referring to Senova's Financial Corporation, which will soon call Riverfront Place home. In addition, the last phase of the project includes a 226-unit multifamily residential community, but a development that the Fountain City has never seen before.
The amenities of this building are going to include an elevated courtyard, a swimming pool, an outdoor hammock park, a 24-hour fitness center, a clubroom, and most importantly, we've actually included a set of private offices and boardroom meeting area for those residents that in today's world work from home.
Side work for Riverfront Place development began in October 2021 with a targeted completion date of early to mid 2024.
I kind of tell W.C. Bradley and some of these bigger guys that I just want the little, the crumbles left over from their cookies.
Owner of Gamache Properties and PTAP Automotive, Jason Gamache, is a Columbus native who has invested and spearheaded several Uptown projects. With a heart for small business owners, Gamache's most recent project, joining the historic Rialto Theater in a former Raymond Row property in the 1200 block of Broadway. The plan is to soon announce a special tenant that will be homed in this revitalized Rialto building. Also taking advantage of basement and first-floor space in the former Raymond Row headquarters, I'm told the options are endless, from retail to dining to entertainment options. The second and third floors of this building will house 16 apartments with wraparound balconies.
It'll be one combined space. It's a passion project for myself, and, you know, when everything comes to fruition and we can kind of make that announcement, I think a lot of people are gonna be excited. It'll be something different for the streets of Broadway.
The project started at the beginning of this year and is expected to be completed in the next eight months. The developer overseeing the designs, John Teepel, says right now, this new courtyard between the new AC Hotel will be a game-changer for pedestrians accessing Front Avenue to Broadway. Now, these projects, just two of several I am highlighting, be sure to tune in to Newsletter 9 tomorrow night at 11 for part two of this series.
Mayor and council, I did not know Ashley Williams was going to be here today covering city council meeting. And I would not dare show her work without giving her credit. So you don't have to say anything, but stand there and let them see who Ashley Williams is. And thank you for your awesome reporting. We often see negative stories, and this is a story about the Uptown development. It's very positive for Columbus, we have great momentum going. Our momentum is strong, and you're helping us to show the citizens of Columbus that strong momentum. Thank you for your great reporting.
Thank you, yeah, there was a part two series as well that aired the next night, Sunday evening. And being a native of Columbus, I love Columbus, and I live in Uptown, so have a passion for Uptown as well, so it's my honor. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You know, this clip said WTVM, but I want to tell everybody that they're watching CCG TV.
That's right.
Good morning. As promised the last time that we came before council, I committed that we would come back and do periodic updates, just to make sure everybody is informed of the activity that is going on from an economic development standpoint, the things we're working on. I will overview or give some information on small business, the ARC Small Business Program, workforce development. We'll talk a little bit about goals from a chamber standpoint, and then some of the progress that we're seeing overall on the economic development attraction front. From a small business standpoint, over the last year or so, we have been working really hard to make sure that we continue to engage small business, especially during the environment that we all just endured. To that extent or effect, we've had the opportunity to execute a small business workshop. We actually did that this February. We worked with about 35 small businesses, and this was really to put them in contact with resources that could help them to provide information and training on various things that support businesses. And we're gonna continue to do that. We anticipate doing another one either in the fourth quarter of this year or in the first quarter of next year. We, just to go back just a quick second on that, you know, it is very similar to the Small Business Roundtable activity that we had been doing before. And again, we're looking for ways to continue to innovate this, we want to engage as many small businesses as possible. There are in Columbus almost 9,000 business licenses, and with our finite bandwidth or resources, again, we've got to be really creative about our approach and how we try to get to as many businesses as possible. We also execute small business visits. These are scenarios where we go and work with businesses one-on-one. We try to understand the health of the business, we try to make sure that, again, as they need connections or they need introductions to various resources, whether it be SBA, whether it be SCORE or other resources, we try to make sure that they have that. And if they're ready to grow, we try to leverage Development Authority and chamber resources to help that happen too. We executed a couple of small business pop-ups. These were a couple of scenarios where we went to a couple of locations and announced to small businesses that we would be there, and you can just come and you can meet the chamber, you can meet your Development Authority team. We're, again, fine-tuning that process as well, but we will continue to do that. We want to make sure that we're reaching businesses in every corner of this community. We also executed the 4K for Startups program in 2021. That was a program that targeted entrepreneurs. We executed that through Startup Columbus. We executed the startup pitch competition, and we awarded the winner of that pitch competition $15,000. That award winner also happened to be the audience favorite in terms of Audience Choice Award, so they got an additional $4,000. We joined the Mesh Network, which is a statewide network of incubators that, again, they leverage and share resources to help and support small businesses as well. And just a fact, we don't have the updated number for March and April, but over 200 new small business licenses were issued in January and February of this year. So again, continuing to, that landscape is continuing to change and grow. And again, we anticipate another small business forum in the fourth quarter or in the first quarter. And as we are able to bring on additional staff at the chamber, we will continue to do our individual small business outreach, again, to make sure that we understand and that we are supporting the health of the small business community. I'm gonna move on just a little bit to the ARC Small Business Program. That is a program where the city secured federal funding through the American Rescue Plan. Five million of those dollars were carved out to support small business. There is a category for small business, there's a category for hospitality and tourism, and then there's another category for nonprofits. What we've seen to date, we've gotten through about 2.5 million of those dollars in terms of recommendations back to the city for reimbursement to businesses. About 400,000 of that 2.5 million has gone to nonprofits, 2.1 million to small businesses. And those small businesses were capped at $40,000. About 23% of those monies were recommended to support small businesses. And again, our role in this process, working with Pam Hodge and her team and the city manager, has been to evaluate the completeness of submissions. Again, making sure that we're reaching out to the businesses when they're missing components of these applications to ensure, again, that a complete application is then submitted for the reimbursement. And those are for primarily COVID-related business expenses. Also, rent and utilities are included in that. Workforce development, we are working with the members of the Partners in Education Program to innovate that program as well. Again, we've had some good conversation around that. We've got a new small business manager, or I'm sorry, workforce development manager in our organization, Connor Miller, and he has been working with that group. And as that plan gets baked and any improvements are made to that Partners in Education program, we'll roll that out and make sure that everybody's aware. But again, that program has been really valuable as we understand from businesses and the school districts, so we have certainly a vested interest in making sure that that continues. Again, we're building a workforce development plan that is not baked yet, but as soon as that is, we will bring that forth and make sure that everybody's aware of it. We've been supporting True Spring and Construction Ready in their endeavors to train primarily in the construction trades, and then advancing the robotics ecosystem. Again, there are several different components from CSU and Columbus Tech all the way to Fort Benning that have interest in seeing the robotics arena continue to thrive or begin to thrive in Columbus. So again, we're working to advance that. From a goal standpoint, what we're trying to achieve is 6,000 direct and indirect jobs over the next five years. We know that that is a lofty projection, but again, it's something that we think we can achieve by increasing our marketing activities and doing some of the things that we just saw in the recent video presentation. We think that we can get there, we know that that will have a substantial impact for the community. We're also trying to attract new chamber members, 500 new businesses in the next five years. Again, you know, right now, we've got about 900 chamber members, and as I mentioned earlier, there are about 9,000 business licenses. Now, just because you're not a chamber member, I want to be clear, does not mean that we will not help you. If you come to us or approach us and ask us for anything, whether it's understanding how you can get a business loan or how you can get access to any number of resources, we're not gonna tell you to go away. We're going to help you. So again, I want to be clear that we want to make sure that we continue to try to grow that footprint as well. We want to grow the awareness of Columbus outside of Columbus. That is really primarily related to the Columbus 2025 Plan and our economic development work. And in doing that, what we intend to do is really delve into a marketing campaign. And that campaign will help us reach places outside of Columbus to share the message, to talk about the good innovative stories, to talk about the quality of life and good culture here in Columbus, to not just businesses, but also to workforce and to tourists. Again, so that they understand that Columbus is a place that they want to come. So again, we'll keep moving down that path as well. Again, workforce development is the order of the day, and I don't mean that in a flippant way. Right now, every business that we talk to is having some challenge or another with workforce. So that is top of mind, and that is something that we hope that our workforce development plan helps us to address. And then the last piece of that, that set of goals, is to partner regionally. We want to make sure that we do everything that is expected under the guise of Valley Partnership, but also in working with other chambers and other organizations. Again, we're gonna continue to move the needle in that regard as well. On the economic development front, from a jobs and private investment standpoint, I want to paint a picture, and the picture is of progress that we're seeing. On the economic development front, from a jobs and private investment standpoint, I want to paint a picture, and the picture is of progress that we're seeing. In 2020, January of 2020, pre-pandemic, what we were tracking or reporting as an organization was roughly a pipeline of three hundred and fifty to four hundred jobs and roughly a hundred and fifty million dollars in new private investment. Now, when I say that, those are not necessarily opportunities that are going to come to Columbus. Those are opportunities that are exploring Columbus. So when I say pipeline, that's what I mean. And then in 2021, we saw that pipeline grow. That pipeline grew to roughly five hundred million dollars in private investment and about five hundred jobs. And as of our last board meeting, we have a pipeline of private investment that is roughly six billion dollars and about sixty-five hundred jobs. Now, again, I want to be clear that that is not a scenario that means that every one of those jobs is going to come to Columbus. But that is a glimpse of what we're fighting for. Those are the scenarios that we're in front of companies, in front of consultants, in front of different entities trying to say or trying to make the case that Columbus is the place for them to do business. And as you can see over the last, those last three timeframes, that growth is enormous. And we're going to continue to do that. And as we grow that pipeline, what it's also going to do is enhance the likelihood that we're actually going to win some of these deals. So stay tuned for that as we continue to work on that. Keep in mind also, in the development presentation that we saw a few moments ago, there are a few others. City Mills, the Ralston Hotel Indigo, AC Marriott, Highland Trace, Hampton Inn, those are all good, solid projects that spent millions of dollars in private investment and they kept construction workers and others employed, especially during the pandemic. Over the last several years, we've seen several companies locate or expand. Those include, not, this is not a comprehensive list, but those include Califormulations, Zummet Plastic, HPPE, Chairman's Foods, Path Tech, Kaiser Warren, Aludine, and Incom. And again, we continue to work on others. I want to give a statistic that most people aren't aware of, and it is that seventy percent of all new jobs in your community come from companies that are already there. And it highlights or underscores the fact that we have to continue to make sure that we support businesses that are already here. That is all I have. And I want to, well, I will highlight this other piece on the economic development front. It is the three main reasons that we see projects locate elsewhere that we're initially competitive for are proximity to eighty-five. That's been a scenario, Interstate eighty-five. They are port-driven. So again, the company is trying to get as close to the port as they possibly can. And the last one is, in some cases, not all cases, but in some cases, the projects are looking at extremely large pieces of land. You know, a thousand acres or more. And we don't have a thousand acre site to market. Don't get me wrong, we're going to work on that. We have been working on that. So hopefully that will decrease as it relates to it being a factor in us getting eliminated from some opportunities. So again, I will stop there. But again, I want to thank the mayor and council and the city manager. We've had an extraordinary relationship with this group. And we will continue to grow that. And Pam Hodge and her team, I would say the same. So again, thank you all for that. And we'll answer any questions. With me, I've got Brian Salido, who is our Vice President of Partnership. And I've got Megan Richardson, who's new to the team. She's the Head of Economic Development. So again, we're happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Woodson.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I appreciate what you said. I had two questions for you. When you were talking in the beginning about the small businesses that you were touching base in certain programs, were those member businesses or is that just anyone off the community that attended those actual workshops?
It's any business. There are a couple of scenarios there. One is that, again, we're trying to provide value. We're obligated to provide value because part of our activity is publicly funded. So from the economic development standpoint, we will work with any business in the community. That's just, so they were not restricted to just Chamber members.
Okay. Well, I would like to put a request in.
Yes, ma'am.
When you have your next, those forms and those programs, could you let me know? Because since the ARP came up for small businesses, I've been put on the ground.
Yep.
And I've been dealing with a lot of mom and pop businesses. And I found a lot of issues concerned. I found a lot of business, a couple of businesses that were actually taken advantage of by, you know, by their accountant and by other means of things. So I'd like to kind of work a little bit closer with you and the community to ensure that we are touching those really small mom and pops that even through this pandemic and even the way the economy is, with sweat and tears, they're still in business and thriving, but they need help. And they can't afford a big membership, but I'm pretty sure once you build that respect and that work partnership, they'll make a way. They'll make a way. So just wanted, if you can please include me in your conversations of that because I think this is something I want to do when I retire. Is work with those little small businesses to tell them, hey, this is where money is. This is where the programs are. Get your knees in there if you're staying in the store. Come on, let's go.
Yeah, absolutely. We welcome that. And you're right. You know, one of the things that is eye-opening from this type of engagement is the fact that all businesses don't start at the same place. They are at various stages of sophistication and experience, and we have to be responsive to that. So we certainly welcome that. And to your point, one of the examples of making those sorts of adjustments, when we started the ARP program, Josh Beard, who's now on the mayor's staff, was working with us on the small business side. And he and I were going through the marketing piece for the ARP program. And then we realized that we wanted to also make sure that Hispanic and other minority businesses were aware of the program as well. So we translated the document into Spanish. But again, it's those sorts of adjustments that we have to be sensitive to you and we want to make sure that we're doing so that this process and all the processes that we engage in are more inclusive.
And I thank you for that. Josh was amazing. He went with me to a couple of the businesses and met the individuals and saw the struggles.
Yep.
The struggles. And he heard those struggles that were going on in our community. They're silent, like the silent heroes, the silent struggles. And I just want to make sure that. Can you also go back to the nonprofit funding? How much did you say that it's already been given out?
It's about four hundred thousand dollars to nonprofits.
And the small businesses?
That was about two point two million dollars.
Two point two million already out. Okay. Thank you so much. I was ill for a little while, so I kind of back off, but I'm back in it. And that's the reason why I want to work closer with you and know about these programs, because yesterday itself, I got a phone call from a small business.
Yep.
And they had an issue. And I went out there and, you know, and helped them. And thanks to our staff. Our staff is amazing. It was after hours. And the staff answered the phone and helped myself and that business person to get through this. And that was Yvonne. She really helped. She was fantastic. I called her and said, Yvonne, I have a problem. How can I do this? And it was after hours. And she was amazing. She told us the direction and where to go and what to do. And we're resolving that issue. So thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Ellen, you failed to tell us too. You have someone that speaks Spanish.
I do. I do. Our office manager, Tiffany Newsome, is Latina and she does speak Spanish.
And thank you for that. I found that out through the ARP and the transition of Josh. And I was very proud. I meant to tell you. Thank you. Thank you publicly. Appreciate it.
Counselor Tucker.
I want to first say thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I actually received a phone call from Trent Chester, from Chester's Barbecue. And, you know, we was working, remember, I came down and met with you and he was like, get me some business owners. And that was one of the individuals, Ronzel Buckner and so many other folks. But he said, thank you. And he appreciated the work that you all have done and also us as a council for approving these dollars. Mr. Ronzel Buckner asked, could somebody call him?
I've got him. And one of the other things that we're trying to help him with is getting some USDA, some additional USDA support for the Victory Garden. So again, he is definitely on my list of follow-up.
Yeah. And I was happy to see that you was on the agenda today because he called me yesterday. And I was walking at Lake Bottom. I'm like, I'm walking, Mr. Buckner. You gonna hear me breathing hard, but you know, we gonna stay on the phone. But he said, can you please help me? I said, yes. But he also said to tell Josh Beard, thank you and you all for the work that you've done. And as Counselor Woodson said, it did take a lot of work because we wanted to get to those disadvantaged businesses that really truly needed the help, those mom and pops. And for the time that you all spent doing one-on-ones, going like one business at a time, and for us to allocate two point two million dollars to small business owners at forty thousand dollars each, you know, up to that amount. That's a lot of work. That's a lot of work. So thank you. I don't think people realize that. That's a lot of work that you all did. Seriously going and speaking with these people. And as Mimi said, you was a phone call away. And we were just able to contact you at all times. So thank you.
Yep. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you so much for this presentation. It's very interesting. You mentioned why business doesn't choose Columbus, Georgia. And you had three points, and I got two of them. The proximity to eighty-five and then large parcels of land. And what was the other one?
So there are several companies that are active, project looking around the southeastern U.S., and they need to export. So they're looking for proximity to the Georgia Ports Authority or to the port of Mobile.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions of Mr. Mitchell?
Gerald, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And thank you all for the partnership.
Well, and you know, I think a piece that you touched on that was critical is even though the Chamber pivoted, as did the government, to trying to make sure that our small businesses were able to survive the pandemic, it appears that you've not only maintained the contacts with the prospects that you had, but you've actually added more prospects to the pipeline and continue to enhance those relationships. So hopefully, we'll see some of those shake loose pretty soon.
Looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we've got another update, and he's been waiting patiently. And I want to thank him. We also really wanted to introduce you to the West Region Vice President of Georgia Power, Doug Jenkins, is with us, going to give us a little bit of an update, kind of a shorter version of, I think, of what he presented to the Smart Growth Group. And heard wonderful things about it and invited him here to chat with us. First of all, welcome to council. And it's been a couple of months, but welcome to Columbus as well.
Thank you, sir, very much. Good morning, everybody. Good to see you, everybody. Welcome. Thank you for welcoming me here today. And it's great for those of you who have not met, really looking forward to spend time with you over the next several months as I get my family moved down here. But it's an honor to have a chance. As Mayor Henderson said, and he did stress this shorter version, I heard that to make sure of that, and I will do that. But really wanted to take this chance to give you just an overview of some of the big energy strategies that are going on in the state of Georgia that impact you and the citizens of Columbus. And so that you'll be aware of them as you're making some of the energy decisions here in the city going forward. So that's the kind of purpose of today. But I am Doug Jenkins, Georgia Power's new West Region Vice President. So I have the honor to run our operations for kind of the western half of the state, headquartered right here in Columbus. Been with the company for thirty years. Don't start trying to guess my age from that. But have had a chance to work in a lot of the areas of the state, but never here in Columbus. So my family is super excited for the chance to get moved down here. My kids are now understanding how fun this move is going to be. So after we find a house, we're really going to be looking forward to get moved down here. So a lot of you, and I'm going to move forward on this right here, are familiar with Georgia Power. Is there, oh, here's the clicker. There we go. Got it. Most of you are familiar with Georgia Power, and I'm not going to go through a lot with our company. But we do have seven thousand folks out there working across the state every day. And they're focused on having a safe, reliable, affordable energy system with rates fourteen percent below the national average and extremely high customer satisfaction. I point those out because any of that can be wiped away very quickly if you're not constantly innovating and listening to your customers, right? So we always are paying attention to that. So that brings me to some things I want you to be aware of as far as an energy strategy that we have got proposed in front of the state right now. And some of it, some pieces of it, we're actually implementing that came directly from customer feedback. The three things I'm going to talk about super fast, I'm going to talk about our Integrated Resource Plan. I'm going to throw a lot of words at you here today, but I promise you, I will explain what they mean. I'm going to talk about our Power System Investment Plan and our Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Plan and what we're doing around that across the state. And I know we were able to recognize some of the students this morning that are actually working on some of those EV kits. So you see that actually going through the schools and a lot of different places. So I'm going to touch on that. Integrated Resource Plan, all right, that's a fancy term where we get together every three years and we talk about what should be the energy supply of Georgia for the next thirty years, all right? So we look out, we get folks together, we look at things like world events, we look at supply chain, we look at fuel prices. We bring in experts to see what are you and your businesses going to demand as far as energy use for the next thirty years. We put it all together and we come up with a comprehensive strategy for this state. This one is different, all right? It's very, very different, and it will transform the state of Georgia as we go forward over the next several years. Let me tell you what I mean by that. If you look at this slide up here, what is in the proposal is we're proposing to shut down all the coal generation plants in the state of Georgia that Georgia Power controls, all right? That's three thousand five hundred approximately megawatts. A megawatt is about the amount of power that would power a Kroger or a Publix or a Home Depot or a Lowe's. That's about the size of that. Those have been the workhorse of this state for sixty, seventy, eighty years. And we're going to be looking to shut those down. Most of them by 2028. All of them by 2035 is what is in the proposal, all right? It's a big change for the state. That's going to be replaced by about twenty-three hundred megawatts of natural gas, cleaning, burning natural gas produced here in the United States, and about twenty-five hundred megawatts of renewable generation. Most of that solar, all right? So how many of you have driven recently down toward Florida and seen the, just all the solar panels out near the interstate, right? That is what I'm talking about, a significant amount more of solar. Georgia is already one of the top solar states in the nation. This will actually double the amount of solar that we have in the state with this proposal that we have out there. We're also going to be trying to match that solar up with some advanced batteries. As we add more solar out there, what do you think happens to it when a cloud goes over? It doesn't work too well, right? So we don't want your lights to flicker. You don't want your lights to flicker every time a cloud goes over. So we're going to match that solar up with some advanced battery technology to give us some ride-through capabilities as we continue to add more of that to our system. We're also going to add some tall wind demonstration units across the state. When I say tall wind, I'm talking about the size of maybe some of the skyscrapers in downtown Atlanta, all right? So very, very tall wind turbines that you typically have to put together on-site. You can't ship the blades or anything under bridges or on the road. So you have to put most of it together on-site. So we're going to put, we're going to be testing that out. And we're also going to be doing a lot of investment in our hydro fleet to make sure that it's operating safely and for the benefit of all citizens for the next fifty or sixty years. And then to make all that work, we're going to have to do. And then to make all that work, we're gonna have to do a lot of changes to our grid, our wires out there. Because if we shut down most of the coal in North Georgia and replace it with solar, a lot of it in South Georgia, that changes a lot of the flows in the state of Georgia. And we've gotta make sure the grid is robust enough to handle that. So, long story short, when that's done, and I'm just gonna mention a couple of these, we're gonna take the state of Georgia from uh, at the beginning of the century, we were sitting there at about fifty percent gas, thirty percent, I mean, excuse me, fifty percent coal, about thirty percent gas, ten percent nuclear, and no solar. To fast forward over to about twenty thirty, we're gonna be about a third solar in this, in this state. We're gonna be about a third natural gas, about thirteen percent nuclear, and very, very little coal, all right? That's a very, very different-looking electric system. It responds to what your citizens have been asking for as we move toward a co- more carbon-free renewable environment. So, a lot of folks are not well, are not aware of this. We have it before the Public Service Commission right now. It's being debated, and this plan will be voted on by the end of the year. So, just wanna make you aware of that one. Second thing, Power System Investment Plan. How many of you are, have talked to your parents or your grandparents? Uh, and they've told you stories about maybe in the thirties or forties when, when we were building lines all across the state of Georgia for the first time, connecting cities and towns together? Have any of y'all heard those stories? All right. Well, if you haven't, I've hear them all the time about people remind us of that. But, but let me tell you what happened. In the thirties and forties, here in Columbus and lots of other places, we were building lines all across the state. And we maintain those lines throughout uh, every single year. But we've got a big bubble coming through the system, right? Now, a lot of those lines that were built uh, way back in the thirties and forties are, have reached the end of their useful life. So, we've got to put in a system, uh, a way to, to replace all that stuff because if, if you tried to do it through a normal process every single year, it, you would never catch up. So, we've got a process with the, with the Georgia Public Service Commission. It's called our, our Power System Investment Plan. It's gonna, it's about a ten billion dollar program over ten years. Uh, where we're going to be working through and replacing our tall transmission structures. Uh, so a lot of our substations and a lot of our distribution lines across the, across the state. All of that is based on uh, improving reliability and a lot of metrics that are, that have been used by outside companies that have come in and helped us look at every single line in the state. So, you're gonna start seeing us move across the state. And here in Columbus, we've already started two uh, projects in this area. We have, we are rebuilding the Bartlet's Ferry Substation up in Harris County. And you're, you've seen us working on two big transmission lines that feed into Fort Benning. Um, because the city has worked with us on some of the walking paths uh, that these transmission lines go down. Uh, we're able to close some of those down and reroute traffic as we replace those structures. All of that is based on changing that aging assets out. In twenty twenty-seven and twenty twenty-eight, we will be moving a lot of resources into this area. Where we will be starting to replace a lot of our distribution uh, structures as, that go through subdivisions, neighborhoods, et cetera. We will not just show up. We will not just uh, be there one day. We will have a lot of community discussions. We will, we will let folks know what we're doing and why. But it's all aimed at improving the reliability of their electric system. Uh, so it'll be much, much better when we finish that up than it is today. So, we're looking forward to getting that done. So, th- this is just a, just giving you a taste that, that that's, that that's coming. But, but we'll be back in front of this group and, and each one of the, the city council members individually as we come into your area to talk through this. And then the last thing I was gonna share is EV infrastructure. You hear a lot about this. We've got a lot of EV companies that have located in the state of Georgia. You've probably seen the announcement of Rivian uh, that's coming up near, near Atlanta. Uh, I think the AJC leaked a story this week about Kia looking down towards Savannah uh, with a particular plant down there. Uh, and then we've got uh, battery plants up on, in northeast Georgia and just a lot of activity around electric vehicles. So, Georgia Power has been working uh, to help with the infrastructure that's needed in this state uh, to make sure that our citizens uh, don't suffer from the range anxiety that, that they're gonna have as more and more vehicles uh, are electrified out there. So, two things just want you to be aware of. We do have a community charging program that we're working on. We're, we're putting seventy charging stations in throughout the state by the end of this year. Uh, those are mainly on interstate routes. Uh, a lot, you know, where people can go uh, on a single charge between these charging stations if needed to feel like they can get to their destination. We do have one at the Burger King off Bradley Park Drive. Uh, if y'all have seen that one, that is part of that network aimed at, at getting folks that come through Columbus kinda down through the eighty-five corridor on their way to Florida, all right? There'll be more coming as we, as we do work on that particular program. But that, just wanna make sure you're aware of what's going on there. Those are fast charger, uh, high voltage. Uh, you can get a, a pretty good charge in your vehicle in about ten minutes. You know, very similar to going to fill up with, with gas. Uh, and then we have a program called Make Ready where we'll be working with businesses across the state that are interested in putting um, EV chargers into their business for their employees. Uh, we'll help, we'll put in the infrastructure behind the meter. The, the company will buy the chargers, and it'll help uh, expand that network out across uh, businesses also. So, that program is fully subscribed, uh, but we're putting in some more funding for that in the next rate case that's coming up. So, that is a big flyover uh, of Georgia Power. Uh, I, I would be remiss if I didn't stop and at least, you know, thank, thank Mayor Henderson, thank Isaiah, thank his, his wonderful staff that we, we have a tremendous partnership uh, with this city, do a lot of things a- around in Columbus to make sure that a lot of the innovative stuff that's happening around the state starts here. And we, we, we appreciate that partnership very much. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Doug. Uh, Counselor Woodson?
Yes. Thank you, uh, Mr. Jenkins, and welcome to Columbus, Georgia.
Thank you.
Where are you coming from?
So, moving down here from uh, Alpharetta area.
Okay. It's a nice area.
Yes.
Welcome to, we're special. Welcome to Columbus.
And very welcoming, very welcoming. Thank you.
I have two questions for you. When you were talking about the fast chargers and you were talking about placing them along the interstate and that will cause people to come into the city and fill up and make their presentation, well, are you loo- uh, are any of those being looked at coming south in South Columbus? And I say that because you have Fort Benning, you have the Infantry Museum, you have Oxford Meadow. You have a lot of people that visiting, that are going into the electrical slash gas vehicle. Um, is there a projection for around when more or less those will head that way?
Absolutely. We're, we're constantly looking for new sites on that. The, the, the good thing is too, is, is of course, Georgia Power is not going to be putting in all of these chargers in the state, right? There's lots of other companies. Uh, the federal government is doing a lot of these chargers in. We're just trying to, to be a partner with them and enable a lot of that technology. So, uh, so we try to, to work with what's going on with the base, uh, what's going, what the city is putting in as far as the chargers because they put in several around, around the city. So, we, we've gotta make sure that we're a good partner with that and a good, a good enabler. Uh, but we are looking on several sites on the southern part, too. So, yes.
And, and the reason I have a little bit knowledge of it, um, my son-in-law had bought two Teslas. So, that's why I know. And then when he was traveling, it was difficult, and he was saying, and Columbus is very hard um, because there wasn't a lot of fast stations. Um, and then when you were talking, well, they moved to Colorado now, but when you were talking, I thought, okay, Fort Benning has what, maybe two hundred, three hundred thousand visitors a year where people um, graduating and, and basic training. And a lot of young people now are doing a lot of the Jeeps, the electrical Jeeps and those things. So, that was my reason and my intent to find out if it was coming towards South, South Columbus also.
Absolutely.
Um, my, my next request for you is um, could you come back and give us a, a presentation on the solo panels for residents? Um, quite often I've seen um, commercials on Facebook that talk about it in the home and where there's companies that will pay you. And then I've heard where there is um, where you have to buy it, you know? And then what's the beneficial for residents if they were, if, when all this solo panel and all this energy changed? Would that cost their, their electric bill to go lower, or is that gonna be higher? What's the plus and benefits of us going into the solar system and our, for our residents?
Okay. Be glad to come back and, and talk about that because there's, you're right, there's a, there's a whole host of programs that you can, you can put things on your own house, on your own roof, uh, all the way to what we call community programs where you can buy into a, a community solar farm uh, and be part of it that way. Uh, all the way up to just going through Georgia Power's normal solar uh, programs. So, there's a vast of different programs for residences based on what they're looking for. So, be glad to come back at a, at a future meeting and talk through that.
Isaiah, can you um, work something out where, I would prefer if he came on a work session because then we can ask questions and we won't be limited in the time. Um, I think it's very important i- i- that we're going into electric and we're going into solar, that our citizens understand it. And as they invest in new homes and as they fix their present home and technology is going that way, it's very important for us to educate them so they make the right choices and know what can benefit. And to me, that's a great partnership with Georgia Power and the citizens of Columbus because you're helping to educate them for the benefit, not only of your company, but their livelihood.
Great.
And lastly, I wanna publicly say um, to Georgia Power is thank you. Uh, we do what's called the Tri-City Latino Festival. It started in twenty thirteen. And Georgia Power has always been, we're going on our ninth year, and Georgia Power's always been a great supporter. So, I just wanna welcome you to our community. I'll talk to you about it later and thank Georgia Power for always supporting and believing in diversity.
Great. Thank you so much for saying that.
Yeah, and Doug, we wanna echo what Counselor Woodson was saying. Georgia Power is always a tremendous partner uh, with, with anything worthwhile in this community, it seems like. Uh, and, and I do think this is critical because I'm, I'm certain counselors get the same kind of questions I do all the time from people. What are we doing about taking uh, steps to, to utilize more uh, clean and renewable energy sources? And listening to the update, Georgia Power's thinking that same way. And uh, so they are continuing to look for ways that uh, leave a smaller environmental footprint and at the same time are more efficient to be able to try to provide the services that you guys provide. So, you know, I think this is great, and I think a periodic update would be uh, would be advantageous for council because I'm, I'm certain they get a lot of questions because I know I'm hearing it as well.
Yes, sir.
But we thank you for all that you do, but we thank you particularly for being here this morning to give us this update. It's very, very informative and uh, and I know council appreciates the commitment to make sure that you guys are communicating with them within their districts on anything that is gonna impact some of those, some of those residents. So, just thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Hope we got Counselor Tucker.
No, thank you.
Oh, is that?
I actually, I actually was gonna ask the city manager, and I don't know, you might be able to benefit for this, I'm not sure. But we just um, attended a conference um, in Savannah. It's our ACCG Annual Conference. And we got an update on the infrastructure bill, and they have two point five billion dollars for charging and fueling grants. So, I'm not sure if it's uh, Georgia Power, you know, initiative that you can apply for these grants. But I, I'm, I know that the city can apply for the grants. It's a competitive grant. It's directly through US DOT. And I just wanted to um, just provide that information. I actually grabbed a couple of, of books. But they had several competitive grants that we could apply for that was directly for electric vehicle charging stations and some other um, yeah, projects. Because just like Mimi said, I live on the east side of Columbus, and it's a lot of military people that have Teslas. So, it would be good for us to have, you know, charging stations throughout Columbus, not just on the north side.
Yeah, and, and Mayor, I was just going to uh, say that um, our eyes are open for any ARP funding. In fact, the mayor and I have had um, multiple conversations with representatives from uh, US Senator Wa- um, Warnock's office and Ossoff's office. And one of the things that we have shared with them on our list when they ask, you know, what can we do for you? We've talked about electric charging stations as a project that we are interested in in Columbus, Georgia. Uh, Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin, that's one of the projects she has worked on and continues to work on. So, uh, electric vehicle charging stations. In fact, um, I uh, even uh, challenged, I see the Fire EMS Chief is here, and um, we challenged them to look at uh, electric vehicles for fire engines and, and ambulance units. And they did some research and came back and reported back to us. So, that is high on our agenda. I want you to know, Metra, uh, they are in the electric vehicle game, and they've ordered some electric vehicles. But, but we look even beyond with Fire EMS, and we learned that, uh, Chief, I don't think it's any, one other place in the country you told us. And uh, but, but we are, that's high on our list.
Yeah, it was real good information in reference to a lot of grant dollars that are out there to help specifically for the electric vehicle charging station. So, just wanted to bring it up.
Great. Doug, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. And the final, final item on my agenda is a uh, an internal audit report on fire and EMS, presented by Donna McGinnis.
Uh, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
In reporting this morning, um, basically, uh, everyone, uh, you had authorized, you had authorized uh, the audit back in January, January twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-one. And in uh, stepping through your report this morning, I began uh, with your authorization, developed an audit program and um, had an entrance conference with the auditee and began conducting fieldwork. There we go. There we are. Okay. And um, in preparation of a draft audit report, we had an exit conference with the auditee. Um, we have an auditee's response, and there was a preparation of the final audit report. The scope of my work included uh, the organizational structure of the Columbus Fire and Emergency Services Department. Uh, operations, an inventory and assessment of all vehicles, capital equipment and facilities out at all of the stations, financial position over a three-year period. Um, also, the administrative, administrative and financial operations, employee succession plan, a review of logistics, training, emergency management, and community risk services. The recommendations, basically to continue to support fleet, uh, Fire Fleet budget requests to ensure that all stations can meet community needs. I'm going to work from the paper myself. And in order to ensure that they can meet community needs, also to explore opportunities to improve the collection rate of EMS billing services that are currently at approximately twenty-six percent. Now, this twenty-six percent, it's, it's a moving number. It, it tends to vacillate. Sometimes it's in the low thirties. Um, the billing tends to run several months behind. Uh, there are some opportunities in that area. Um, also, a third recommendation, as fire and EMS employees have a required minimum staffing level under FSLA, the department is automatically incurring overtime for CCG perk incentive days that may be offered for employees. As a result, additional overtime dollars have been included in their fiscal twenty-three budget request and as identified in the fieldwork. And that's the justification. What happens sometimes is you'll have a, a fire employee that participates in maybe a blood drive, you know? So, they've earned a perk, and when they've earned that perk, we're already, you know, underwater with overtime. Uh, so that, it's a chronic cycle, you know? So, that's why you see those overtime requests in that budget. in that budget. Um, so those, those, in essence, are the recommendations. I will share with you that my field work in the Fire Department was, was just really enlightening. I found a work culture that I have not seen in any of the other city departments. I s- I found an exceptional work culture. I found a level of transparency that an internal auditor seldom finds. Uh, I saw a, an exceptional level of leadership that you often do not see in the public sector. Um, makes you very, very proud to live in this community. You never wanna be the citizen that has a fire in their house. You never wanna be the citizen with a medical emergency, but if you are that citizen, you wanna live in Columbus, Georgia. You wanna be that person. Uh, very, very proud to live in this town. At this point in the presentation, we have an auditee's response. Now Chief Scarpa has responded to the audit report and concurs with my report. Uh, he indicates that he's proud to have participated in the process with his department and that he values the transparency and seeks out opportunities to continue improvements in his department. Um, at this point, I'd like to open the, the forum for any questions that the counselors or executive management might have, but I'd also like to invite Chief Scarpa to join me at the podium so that you can bring your questions. Chief, if you wanna join me, that way, uh, you can entertain questions with me. Do we have any questions?
Yes, Counselor Thomas.
Um, excuse me. Uh, excuse me, Ms. McGinnis, you said the collection rate was 26%?
It had been 26% at a point, it may be in the low 30s today.
Wait, my question is, is that the, uh, amount that we are collecting is only 26% of what we are billing, or are we not billing but 26%?
I, I think you could probably better address that one, yeah.
Good morning. Um, to answer your question, Counselor, we are, on average, we're annually billing about $7.4 million. Uh, we're contractually writing off about $3.1 million. Our average annual collections is what, what winds up being collections is about $1.9 million, and what we are receiving, what we are receiving back is about 2.3, which is actually about 32%. That was a typo on my part. So we're billing 7.4. We're currently receiving, on average, based on a three-year average, about 2.3. And so we think there's some opportunities there for, uh, some improvement.
I, I'm a, I'm a little confused and are concerned if I need to be...
Mr. Mayor, let me have the Finance Director come in and respond to collection.
So I'm not exactly fully prepared to answer all the questions that you may have today because I haven't seen the report, um, until just a few, uh, moments ago, but what I will say in terms of what we bill out, uh, about 76, 77% of what we bill is Medicare, Medicaid, um, payments, and those rates are set. I mean, they're, they're not, it doesn't matter that we bill $700 for BLS or $900 for ALS. Medicaid will only pay us about $277 per trip. Uh, Medicare is about $324, and this is, uh, for BLS. Um, so in terms of the percentages that's being, um, you know, thrown around, like I said, I haven't had the opportunity to, to, to really vet that, um, but what I do know in terms of, um, what we bill and what that pay, a lot of what we bill is contractually written off. Um, year-to-date, in terms of FY '22, we've written off about 53% of what we bill because of Medicare, Medicaid. About seven, another 17% has been written off in terms of what we bill for indigent care, uh, in indigent residents, deceased individuals, and those, uh, who were transported to the hospital from the county jail.
And, and let me just say, Counselor Thomas, um, this has been, um, obviously a concern for many years because, you know, you may have a, a transport that's $1,300 or $800. I don't care, as you heard the Finance Director say, you can build them, bill them, bill them $2,500. You're, you're gonna get 250 or you're gonna get 300. And so it looks like the collection rate obviously is very low because there's a maximum. And so that is why private ambulance, uh, companies, and, and I'll just say it, well, I won't say that, but, um, obviously, if they transport and it's $1,300, they're gonna get that maximum too, is that right? The private companies?
Well, right, if it's Medicare, Medicaid.
They're gonna get that maximum, so...
Well, Mr. City Manager, let me make sure I understand. If the bill is $1,300 and Medicare pays 300 of that, are we just writing off the other $1,000, or are we trying to collect that from the person who used the ambulance?
If it's Medicaid, we are just writing it off. If it's Medicare, depending on the, um, plan, um, we do go after, if we can collect from individuals the diff- the difference, we do try to collect the difference.
Well, and, and of course, because of, um, the, the ability or inability to pay, I mean, obviously you want to collect, and I believe it goes to collection agencies.
It does.
And, you know, if you can't collect from who you can't collect from because of inability to pay is, is all I'm saying.
But there, and, and we've had conversations. There are different things that I think the staff is in the process of evaluating to see whether or not it would make a big enough difference because if we, if we did something outside of what go, what we do from our finance area, obviously there's a cost that would be incurred, uh, if we hired somebody. So the challenge is to determine whether or not the, the juice is worth the squeeze because for some, some of the billing, uh, you know, sometimes it's a race to the insurance company. I mean, the ones that get there first get paid, and so, you know, we're, we're looking at a number of different initiatives to try to beef up those collections. Um, but, but as, as the, the Finance Director mentioned, so much of that is regulated due to a maximum limit that's gonna be paid by Medicare, Medicaid, uh, that, that just don't have an option to go get that money. And we once, frankly, we, we had heard at an, an earlier occasion, when we do try to collect those funds, uh, you know, you've got somebody that's in the hospital or just out of the hospital, and, and we had some complaints from people because private companies were going after, uh, collection agencies were going after those folks too.
I, I guess, uh, if the bill is $1,300 and Medicare pays 300, am I sent a bill for the other $1,000?
Not if it's Medicaid, and depending on...
Or Medicare.
Or Medicare, mhm. I mean, it just depends on the plan.
Well, and, and Mayor, we'll be happy to come during a work session and break it down. She, she obviously, we didn't come to answer this today.
I, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but that, that number just...
And I'm impressed that she knew the, the stats off the top of her head. The 76%, the 7...
It's like five minutes of research.
You know, but at any rate, we'll be happy to come back, but, you know, obviously we're billing low, fixed income, low-income persons, and we're going to collection agencies on fixed income, low-income persons, and the collection rate is gonna be very low.
That's right.
But we'll be happy to come back and talk to you.
Thank you.
Do we have any additional questions?
I think that's it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll, uh, move on to the city attorney's agenda. Mr. Fay?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Got a fairly short business agenda. Need to vote on some zoning. The first one up is 4322 Rosemont Drive, right wage petition. Ready for a vote?
Motion approved.
Motion approved from Counselor Thomas, second from Counselor Kieran, I believe. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please cue it for votes, and Counselor, please register your, your vote. Counselor Davis and Counselor Huff both vote in the affirmative.
All right, that passes. Thank you, Ms. Clerk. Second zoning.
Okay, so please register Counselor Crabbe's vote as a yes as well, and that makes it unanimous. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next zoning item for a vote is 1311 Warm Springs Road, Jordan Mills.
All right, there's a motion, a second. Counselor Tucker, is it to the motion?
I didn't, oh.
Oh, okay. All right, there's a motion, motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All right, please cue it. Counselors, register your votes, please. All right, Counselor Huff and Davis both voted affirmatively, so that's unanimous.
All right, next one up is the 2016 Comer Avenue petition. Ms. Jones is here.
Motion for Counselor Woodson to approve, seconded from Counselor Tucker. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, please cue it. Counselors, register your votes, please. I think we're missing, missing one more. Whose is not? Oh, Counselor Barnes stepped away. Uh, Counselor Huff and Davis voted how? Madam Clerk?
Your mind please.
Yep. It's approved.
All right, that does pass. Thank you, Ms. Jones, for being here. Next one up is 1118 Tenth Avenue, going to General Commercial Deals and Steals. Mr. Gibson's here as a representative, is ready for a vote.
Motion from Mayor Protem, second from Counselor Tucker. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please cue it. Counselors, enter your votes, please. Davis and Huff, both voted yes, okay?
All those are approved. The, uh, next item ready to vote on would authorize the Ironworks Convention Trade Center Authority to...
Motion approved from Counselor Crabbe, second from Counselor House. Uh, is any discussion on that item? All right, please cue it. Counselors, register your votes. Counselor Huff and Davis both voted yes, so that's unanimous as well.
All right, that's approved. We have one new zoning hearing. Mayor, this is property at 3679 Steam Mill Road, going from single-family four to General Commercial, recommended approval for Mercy Med of Columbus and Columbus Baptist Association. Mr. Gibson's here, Mr. Tony Nguyen is here for Mercy Med. Are there any questions around the table?
I don't see any.
Anybody in the audience wanna be heard on this petition for or against? All right, we'll bring this back. I think it's a May 31 meeting. Mr. Gibson, just check that. Bring it back for a vote then. And, uh, that's all we had, Mayor. May wanna call up Judge D'Antonio if possible, I know he's been here a long time, but that's all we had on our agenda.
Um, we do have the public agenda next. Uh, Judge has been waiting, uh, but if he got thi... All right, well, we'll move forward. Let's do what now?
He's standing.
Okay, let's, uh, let's move forward the public agenda, uh, for those folks. First, uh, is Mr. Jeffrey Bogan regarding property damage caused by a tree located on city property. Now, I'll remind all those that are speaking on the, uh, on the public agenda that you'll have five minutes, sir, and if you're unable to get through in five minutes, you have the option of waiting to the end of the clerk's agenda and you can come back for three more minutes. And I'll start the timer after you state your name and your address.
Okay, good morning to all of you. My name is Reverend Jeffrey C. Bogan. Um, I'm presently residing in a family home that is located at 5363 Spencer Lane in the Dawson Estate subdivision. Um, it was the home of my deceased sister Sheila Walker Bogan, and, uh, I have authorization, I ask that Mrs. Davis would submit to you electronic copies of my presentation along with pictures, uh, that I had presented with it. My niece, who presently own the property, allowed me through a written letter of, uh, authorization to petition this body of government, uh, to repair, uh, damages that was done, uh, approximately 10 years ago, a tree on the north bank of a ditch line that runs behind the family property, uh, fell, and it landed on, uh, a fence, and, uh, it damaged the fence, tore it down, and also, uh, it has caused other concerns and danger, uh, that is there. The, uh, ditch line is becoming congested, uh, the water can no longer flow freely, uh, through that area. Uh, it is also causing erosion, uh, along it, which probably, uh, contributed to the tree, uh, uh, falling upon the property. There's also, uh, another, other trees that are leaning presently towards my property, uh, about to fall. Uh, this is on city, uh, property. Uh, I'm a foster parent. I have an 11-year-old and a 15-year-old, uh, young boys, and, uh, one is autistic, and he don't have a sense of danger, uh, you know, and I can't even allow them to go into my backyard with this, uh, with these hazards there. Um, I'm here today to, uh, petition you on behalf of our family. We are, uh, it is our prayer that you would, uh, authorize the repair, uh, of this property and the erosion that is occurring behind the property. And it is our prayer that before you vote, know that you will come look at it for yourself as our, uh, councilwoman has done. Mrs. Tucker, we appreciate her coming out and viewing it as well. Um, I might not follow this directly, I wanted to be brief and to the point, uh, as to what we're asking, uh, this body of government to do, uh, is to repair these damages that occurred. Uh, you partnered with the, these Columbus Water Works a few months ago to repair my neighbors. There was a ditch, uh, drainage line that went along and caused erosion in their yard, and that same erosion, the water flowed towards our side and caused erosion also behind our property. And, uh, I was under the impression that maybe when you had repaired that, that you would all had, uh, repaired the property, there was the damage that was behind our property as well, but that didn't occur, uh, nor that I received what I would maybe consider a respect or proper notification that it wasn't gonna be done, you know? So I'm asking the body if you would, uh, please make these damage on behalf of our family.
Uh, Mr. City Manager?
Uh, Ms. Mayor, uh, thank you, and, um, I, I did receive, uh, email, uh, photos from, uh, a clerk of, uh, Council Davis on yesterday and sent them to, and of course, that was my first time seeing them, uh, and sent, um, an email to Risk Management, and I see Ann Maria Mill is here, and, uh, and also to, uh, Public Works Director Drell Short, she's here. And, um, I, I would, Mayor, like to hear from them because I have not had an opportunity to talk with them, uh, about, um, what has been presented, and so, um, when, uh, Mr. Bogan is done, I will have them come and share with us, um, what they know about, uh, this request.
Okay. All right, Mr. Bogan, uh, if you want to, sir, if any counselor has a direct question of you, you're welcome to answer, but other than that, you, you... but other than that, you'll need to stick around if you have any additional information to provide till the end of the meeting. But we'll ask Director Short and Risk Manager Anne Marie to come up and give a little bit of information as well, sir, and you'll have an opportunity to hear that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. We did, in fact, go out there to repair a cave-in that occurred on a thirty-six-inch pipe behind Mr. Bogan's neighbor's house, which is fifty-three twenty-seven Spencer Lane. In the process of doing that, the owner of Spencer Lane asked us if we would go through her neighbor's yard instead of going through her yard, because of the mature holly bushes that she had, and the fact that part of her storage shed was actually on the easement. I do have some pictures here that will allow you to-
Okay, and you can get the mic on, the mic over there as well.
So as you can see, we did, in fact, repair a pipe, and that's what this green speck is right here. The pipe came from across Spencer Lane into his neighbor's, into the easement, it's a drainage easement that goes between the two homes, and then, of course, a drainage ditch in the back. In the front of this property, you can see here where her neighbor has very mature holly bushes that she used as her privacy fence for her property, and she didn't want us to take those out if we didn't have to. So we did speak with Mr. Bogan to see if we could use this property, as the Water Works had done previously, to go behind their property to fix the storm drain that was, in fact, damaged. To show you a picture of the damage that we were looking at, you can see right here, this is a thirty-six-inch storm pipe that had actually caved in and had started eroding the back of his neighbor's house, and that is what we repaired. This is the repair that was done, and you can see where the water is naturally flowing down through the storm drain, through the storm ditch, excuse me. And this is a picture of the final product, once we were finished. We had to make sure that that pipe would not, in fact, cave again, and we wanted to make sure it was reinforced and that that would not be the case, but if you can look, you can see that the storm drain, the ditch line itself is clear, free for water to flow directly behind that area. So we have completed the work, we did, in fact, go back there, we have done everything that we're going to do. As far as Mr. Bogan's property in the backyard, there is nothing back there for us to repair, there's no piping or anything in his back that would require us to do any work there.
So this fence that he mentioned ten years ago, or whatever, a tree fell on the fence?
I'm not familiar with that at all. But based on his pictures, I don't know if you have his pictures, I've got one, I could probably show you that. This is from the picture that Mr. Bogan himself sent to us.
Okay, and I, and not only the fence, he mentioned the flow of water, tell me about that as well.
At this point in time, there's no, there's no, there's nothing blocking it, the creek bed itself is clear and free for water to flow.
Okay, and then the fence, too?
This is the fence area that I think he's talking about here, and you can tell where the fence itself has just fallen or eroded, maybe due to a fence line or not, I couldn't tell at the time that I was out there.
So our property that we own is, first of all, is there an easement?
There is a drainage easement.
And who owns the easement?
The easement is actually their property, that is just, we use to make sure that there's no flooding established in the area.
And is the fence on the easement, or?
The fence is on his property.
Okay, and, and so our property is, is it just heavily wooded, what is it?
It's, it's a ditch, it is a, I'd say about a six to eight-foot wide ditch line that is, that goes all the way through the entire area, but it is, the baseline of that ditch is clear and free for water to flow.
Okay, so I guess, I'm just trying to be clear, and I would ask Anne Marie to come to the podium, and I don't know that, we checked three-one-one to see if there's any report, and I haven't asked them any of these questions before, I don't know what the answer's going to be, but-
We have no record, we've certainly not received any kind of claim for damage. We ran a search on the system, we, until I got that documentation yesterday, I was actually under the impression that we were talking about a tree at the front of the property that Georgia Power took down, so yesterday we got that, and, and then we realized that Mr. Bogan was not actually the owner of the property. But we could not find any complaints about this in the system, so-
And you went back years?
We did go back.
So, so tell me what happens if, you know, I mean, you deal with insurance, if a tree falls on a fence, is, who's responsible?
If the tree were a city tree, what we usually do is we, we obviously investigate, but we will usually respond, if somebody has never told us about a problem with a tree, then we're not on official notice. If we have had notice of a tree problem, Public Works will go out, and they will take a look at the tree, and if they deem, if the arborist deems it necessary, they'll take the tree down, if it's on city property. But if it's on private property, we cannot take it down. The only thing about the drainage ditches at the back, a lot of people don't realize that they're actually a private property, and all that Public Works does is make sure the flow of water is okay, if it's carrying public water.
Okay, so you went back through history, dating back many years, and there's no report or history, and?
Not that we could find, no.
Okay. So, Ms. Mayor, obviously, it's a matter that, and the pictures are very, not very clear to me, I, you know, I can't recommend that we repair something that has not been reported, because obviously, you know, people are watching by TV, and even if they, if we were not on TV, we don't, we cannot set a precedent, and I'm not the lawyer, the lawyer is the lawyer, but we cannot set a precedent where there's nothing in our system, we've never known about any issue, and we're talking about something that's more than, that could be ten years old. As City Manager, I can't recommend that we, we repair fence.
And I don't, I don't know that it makes any difference legally, but to be clear, that ditch itself is, is private property that we have an easement-
That's right.
-to access it, so that the basic aesthetic maintenance of it is up to the individuals that own it, we only get engaged if there's something that causes a blockage and reruns the water.
That, that hinders the flow of water, yes.
May I, may I say, Mr. Mayor, that the, the photos in which she shared was not photos behind my property, it was photos behind the property, the repairs that were done next to me, that showed a clearance. They, my property, which is, I submitted photos to, with the presentation that Ms. Davis said was going to be submitted to copies of electronically to you all. If you would note those photos, you would see in the attachments, were on the tree that fell from off the ditch line, the dark north side, not on our side, but on the other side of the ditch, and fell over onto our fence, okay? And if you noted that there is congestion that is behind our property. Now, what she showed you was the neighbors, okay, next to us, and the ditch pipe that had eroded there also contributed to the erosion carried on behind our property. Okay, that came from you all's pipe as well, okay? That was, all of that contributed, along with the congestion. Also, I did not dial three-one-one. In the past year, when my sister resided there, she's deceased now, she had, over ten years ago, contacted about the ditch, about the tree, and was denied the services, okay? When Ms. Drell, along with her whoever, came out and looked at the property next door, she came into my yard to also see if they could come through my yard to make the repairs. The question was asked of me, can we come through your yard? My response, yes, because I'm expecting you all to make the repairs that are back behind my yard as well. She was physically there, along with other supervisors. She looked, and she got advice from those that she, that she had with her. They said to her that the problem that occurred came from my yard, erosion comes from my yard, the flow of water. Ain't that much water came from my yard to create that kind of problem. Naturally, over the years, there have been some natural erosion from my yard, yes, but not that caused that damage, okay? No one, even when she comes, she asks for the owners to give her permission. I waited on my knees, starting them to give me the written authorization, but before it got to me, they had come and started doing the repairs next door. I asked one of the supervisors, black supervisor, were they going to do the repairs next to me as well? I was told then, no. That's how I found out about, so it's not a matter of them not knowing.
Yep. Well, Mr. Bogan, we've got a couple of Counselors that have some comments and questions too, sir, Counselor Tucker?
Thank you, sir, for bringing this to the Counsel's attention. I will officially request that a ticket be created for this incident, since we're saying there's no ticket, and for us to actually go out there and physically write up a report, because what has happened in the past is some incidents occurred at the next-door neighbor's property, and we said that it was not city property, and in fact, it was, which is completely different, but just showing how things happen, and sometimes, if we actually go back out and evaluate the situation, we might find that we are at fault, like it was with the next-door neighbor's tree, that we said it wasn't the city's property, and eventually, we did find out that it was the city's property, and we had to address that issue. So I'm requesting that we go out there and see, in fact, if exactly what he's mentioning, that the cause of the erosion occurred initially at his home, or whatever the case, and to rectify exactly what happened, that's my request in reference to him.
Well, and let me just say, Ms. Mayor, certainly, I intend to have my staff follow up, to go back out, take a look, and provide me a, a report, and, and if there are any issues that we determine that we're responsible for, we're certainly going to take care of them. But if staff determines that we're not, and then we, the response would be that it's not a city responsibility. The, the thing that, we're always going to own up and take care of our responsibility. I saw this, obviously, yesterday, the photos, have not had a direct conversation, but sent an email to them yesterday morning, and so this is the first report I'm hearing, and so I intend to follow up and investigate, but at, at this table this morning, if there's a fence damage, and that's damaged, and that's the request, I am not in a position to assume responsibility on behalf of the city and the taxpayers for something that, under no circumstances, would we pay for, for another citizen. But we will do an investigation, and staff will provide me a report.
I think that going out there and checking, it wouldn't be a bad thing, I, I do know that we, we have situations like this, where there are drainage ditches that, I have one behind my house that is, there's an easement, it's private property, and we had a number of trees fall that we had to dig out of there, so, Counselor Thomas?
I think that Counselor Tucker and, and the City Manager have done what I was going to request, that we have a conversation, your staff, with Mr. Brogan, and whatever, whatever you find, bring it back to us, so that we can know what to do. I think that, that the statute of limitations may have some play in this, I don't know, ten years sort of rings a bell, but our Risk Management Department be included in those conversations, if you would, Mr. City Manager, thank you.
All right, Ms. Bogan, thank you, somebody will be out there, hopefully make arrangements with you to go out there and take a look at it.
Thank you, thank you all for representing, continuing great work.
Yes, sir, thank you for being here. All right, next is Ms. Cheryl Cob, is it Cobb?
Cob.
Cob, I got it right the first time, representing DCA, Georgia Department of Community Affairs, regarding information on Georgia rental assistance. Could you just state your name and your address for the record, and we'll start our timer?
Well, and Ms. Mayor, let me just say, before she speaks, had I known what she wanted to talk about, I would have put it on my agenda, because I would not want to limit her to five minutes to tell our citizens how Georgia rental assistance can work better in Muskogee County.
Right.
And so it would not be fair to the citizens to, in my opinion, to limit her to five minutes, but she got on the public agenda.
Which is fine, I really, I wanted just to do a brief introduction and ask to get on somebody's agenda, so we could talk deeper about this.
Sure.
We'll do that, we'll get the overview, get the flyby, and then we'll, we'll, we'll move on to a deeper dive after that.
That's kind, that's just kind of how I roll, you know?
All right, I'm just saying.
So I'm Cheryl Cob, I am a GRA Outreach Coordinator here in the Muskogee County and surrounding counties, I have sixteen counties in all. I am just here today to be very brief, and just ask that we find a way that we can better help our community access these funds. I have, we have five hundred and fifty-two million, and then another four hundred million that came in later. This program will be around till twenty twenty-five, okay? And I think, a lot of people think the program discontinued at the end of last year, but we were allowed an extension for that original five hundred and fifty-two million, and we really need to get it spent down, so we don't have to send it back to the federal government. We want to spend it here in Georgia. It, there are problems, I'm, I'm aware of, and I'm also working very hard with different landlords and tenants to resolve them. It's unfortunate that, that some choices were made, and they weren't good ones, and things got delayed, and it was just, we're working through that, and we're hiring more resources to, of course, process these applications. Every day, somebody from Muskogee, many people from Muskogee County, get on the internet, and they apply for these funds. We just want to figure out a way where we can educate the community, so that they know what they're doing, because a lot of times, people have barriers, we have people, we have organizations in place here in town that actually take the applications for people, to make sure that they get through the process. So, you know, I just brought everybody a card, and I brought everybody just, just our little flyer to review, and we do also have it in Spanish. So, and, and I do want to come back at a later date and speak longer, and provide you with a more in-depth understanding of the program and how we're working in this area.
I think that that's terrific, and we'll, we'll try to get you- And we'll try to get you back at the very next meeting. I think it's the end of this month. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Can you tell me what the rental assistance, the rental assistance, you know, I'm sorry, I've got all discombobulated, what it entails?
Oh, right now, we're doing our best to get people caught up on their arrears. So, and then we're also scheduling, normally scheduling, an additional three months forward. So, it's a total of eighteen months that you can qualify up to. You do have to recert every three months. But it is, it is a very beneficial program if you are currently unemployed. I mean, to get someone to pay your rent for the next day, for what you owe, and then, you know, eighteen months total. There's no financial cap on that. So, that, this program doesn't have a financial cap. Sometimes we have people in hotels. We work to make sure people, if they have storage bills, that they can get those paid. Moving costs, sometimes down payments for their, for a new rental place if they get evicted. You know, because a lot of landlords are just very impatient at this time. I know everybody knows Louie. I've worked with Louie to make sure one of his residents, they were taken care of. They had originally been denied, but there was some underlying problems there that required some case management skills. And so, I took the case over and handled it myself. I can't do that with every case, of course, in Muskogee County. But I do want to, I do want to make sure that if we have something that's getting, you know, six months behind, that it is brought to my attention and I can look at it personally and see if there's something I can do to, you know, escalate it and make it get through the system a little quicker.
I've spoken with Louie and, he's my neighbor. And he talks to me about a consulting, you know, a tenant consultant that follows the tenant. Is that your department that does that?
Unfortunately, all the coordinators, we have many coordinators across Georgia. We have emails and phone numbers to call. Unfortunately, they were leaked out, which is fine for me. I'm a customer service person. I'm gonna call and make sure they understand if it's something I can answer, if they need to speak with the customer service, or I often contact the processor. I usually spend Fridays just clearing emails and phone calls from people. I don't do that personally, you know, because for me, I'm, I take a processor type of role when I'm dealing with someone. And so, what we do is we like to take and make sure they have access to that processor. Maybe the processor's ignoring them, or maybe they're just, you gotta remember, the processors have five hundred applications they gotta touch every week. So, that's a lot. And it's very overwhelming. Many of the processors start and within a few days, they quit. So, but what I do, we were told, you're not customer service. But then, customer service doesn't have access to the portal, so I'm customer service.
Okay. So, it is just rental payment assistance. It is not assistance to where sometimes if the rent payment is behind, then the landlord does not have the funds to help with some repairs that need to be taken care of. Because they use the rent money to take care of the repairs. And so, it's kind of a downward spiral. And so, I was just wondering if some of the five hundred and fifty-two million could actually be used on some of these properties of, you know, it's like paying the rents, but also helping the landlord make repairs to their, their properties to benefit these renters also.
So, they expanded it, like I said, we can also catch people up on their arrears in utilities. So, that's the power, the gas, the water. You know, there's certain things that we are trying to expand that money to use. I do think there's certain guidelines the federal government set down. I don't think repairs to the property is one of them. But I know that, like I said, we're also trying to, individuals that maybe are evicted during the process of applying for funds, we want to make sure that they are not homeless and that they're housed. I ran into one on Friday, was wearing my little tag and I went to get gasoline. And the young lady was like, I need to talk with you. And so, we talked for a little while. And there was nothing I could do about the problem right there other than call some nonprofits that I knew would help her out. And so, I was able to at least get her off the street. And that's gonna be one of my projects this week is to try to get her through the system and in a hotel. So, it's just unfortunate it happens sometimes. But also, you know, I've only been in this position for a couple of months now. And it would have been great to have a coordinator here at the beginning of the process to kind of mitigate these problems.
Well, and we will get you back so that we can go a little deeper into some of this. So, I appreciate it. Counselor Tucker?
Thank you, ma'am. I'm trying to remember what event we were at just recently and I missed you and I was saying.
Urban League.
Urban League.
And the year before, it was the LGBTQ pride.
That's where, okay, okay. But thank you, we definitely, definitely need this. I did want to say something to the city manager because he's always on it when it comes to this. Didn't Director Rob Scott do something with, I see he's back there. Did we have some programs that we did in the city that we can possibly talk about?
Home funds, I think.
Yes, we were using ARP dollars, if he would come forward just to make sure we get it right.
Let him tell it, because I missed it.
Yeah, and I'm glad you made that point. And while he's coming, not only this, I challenged Rob Scott and our department heads at our last department head meeting, but I'll talk about that when they're done.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Would you mention our, because you've done briefings here before about the rental assistance?
Tons of times.
Yes.
Okay.
Tell them who you are and.
Okay, my name is Rob Scott. I'm the Director of Community Reinvestment. When the program first started, the city manager put it on our radar to try to promote the program as much as we could. We did try to reach out to DCA to get a direct allocation to administer the program locally. But that was unsuccessful. So, our next step was to connect with DCA and be a partner in terms of promoting the program. So, what we did locally was we created navigation stations and we created navigators who were specifically nonprofit agencies who would kind of like handhold clients through the process. So, we did a landlord engagement where I think we had a hundred and seventeen landlords show up and get educated in partnership with DCA at the time. The program has been moving forward. And again, this is a DCA administered program, DCA funded. We just wanted to do our best locally to be able to make sure that our citizens were able to have the information to be able to connect with the program. So, we did a lot of work in promoting the opportunity locally.
All right, Counselor Woodson?
Hello, Ms. Chair, thank you for coming. I know I've met you once, I think it was here during, when they were doing the vaccinations. And I was next door with community warriors passing food. Could you please get this in Spanish for me? I would appreciate it so I can distribute it. And my next question was, or a request was, I'm working in a community called Oakland Park. I'm working with a community group that's called Jobs for Life. And we have a lot of disadvantaged families there. I'm gonna text Pastor Powers to reach out to you. But I wanted to know if you could take fifteen, ten minutes and come out and talk to the class about what's available here and for them to know that this is available. Because I'm just a coach during the process. And it's a program that's helping people apply for jobs, how to present themselves, how to do resumes, you know, how to search for jobs. But we run into a lot of what we call roadblocks. And a lot of the students, we're always, you know, quickly trying to resolve some issue why, you know, they can't come to class or because they're getting ready to get evicted. Or, you know, we're like hitting stuff that we're sitting there and going, oh, my God, no wonder they can't get a job with all the obstacles. So, I just wanted to just plug that in your ear and Robert Scott, Mr. Scott, you too. And see if you will come out there and talk to the students, you know, for a few minutes. We did have someone come to talk to the students about financials, how to get themselves, there's these individuals that are disadvantaged, people that are educated but lost their jobs and are having a hard time finding a job. So, we're just kind of helping them with Jobs for Life to be able to get these things. So, just wanted to let you know if you get that phone call from Reverend Powers, my fault.
And that's, that is, as a outreach coordinator, that's kind of my primary thing is to be at food drives and different community events where I can pass out flyers. You know, sometimes it's, you know, Urban League, that was a great event to be at. But then, most times, it's, you know, out at the food distribution downtown with the aging, River Valley on Aging, was down there passing out flyers during their little drive-through health events. So, you know, that's the primary position and things I do, but also educate. So, whether, you know, I'm talking to a family connection group and giving them, you know, or talking with the city council, making sure that we've got the community on top of this. So, because we have just graphics for social media and webpages that, you know, we just like to see posted. I was out with, meeting with Flint River, talking with them yesterday about how we can, they're gonna set up little kind of kiosk for their people to come in and actually apply for, you know, Flint River Energies. That way, they can come in and get caught up on their power bill and also get ahead on their rent, you know, these type of things. So, we're always just looking for really creative ways. And of course, any opportunity to educate the public and provide the flyers in any kind of event. But, you know, sometimes you go out, you might talk to three people. Sometimes you go out, you might talk to three hundred people. So, I'm there for the three or the three hundred.
Well, if you can send that, you know, some of your little bits to me, I can put it on my Facebook. And if you can get me the Spanish one, I can get it out to the Spanish churches.
Absolutely.
And then, they can reach out to you. And then, if you need my help, just let me know in the process of it so that we can go ahead and get this out in the community. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Mayor, if I may just add, so the council members know, and this is an important subject, that's why I made the comments before you came up. Because, you know, not only is it good for citizens, it's good for many of our employees to hear about this rental assistance.
So, just a quick idea, somebody making thirty-six, a household of one, making thirty-six thousand dollars a year qualifies for this program.
Yeah, and so, and certainly, we have employees who fall into that category, Mayor. And I was about to say, and that's why I didn't want Rob Scott to leave at my last, at the last department head meeting, you know, I had thirty-five, forty people in that meeting via Zoom. But I challenged them and really chastised because Rob Landers has the down payment assistance program. And these, and this program is where you get ten thousand dollars down payment assistance, for example. And if you stay in the house for, let's say, five years, and he'll correct me in a second, it's forgiven. And so, our employees should be first inland, those who qualify, to apply for that ten thousand dollar down payment assistance and get themselves out of an apartment where, once you get into this home with this ten thousand down payment assistance that's forgiven, your rent is less than, your house payment, no, mortgage is less than what you were paying for rent. And I said to the department heads, Public Works, Metro, Engineering, I know that you have many employees who fall into an income bracket with three or four in the household, that they should get this down payment assistance. And if you're walking past your employee, looking your employee in the face every day, and you as a director is not saying, here, look at this and call Rob Scott, my word is for them, shame on you. Those are your employees, they work for you. You should be looking out for their best interest. And so, I think I stirred up something. And Rob, I think you started to hear from department heads and, but just in two minutes, come to the mic. Is it ten thousand dollars, is it forgiven? Tell me how it works.
Okay, so, as part of the Georgia Cities Week initiative and to help to achieve and close the gap in terms of accessibility. When we say accessibility, we mean things like down payment assistance. Our department increased the ten thousand dollar down payment assistance to fourteen thousand nine seven five. So, it's more than ten thousand dollars, almost fifteen thousand dollars. The principal requirements are simple, that of the household, based on the number of people, and it should be under HUD's Area Median Income Listing of eighty percent. And the security deed is what covers that down payment assistance. So, all we ask is that you, we want to give you this money, you be under this income limit, and that you make this home your principal residence for five years. At the end of the fifth year, the amount of the down payment assistance is then forgiven. And then, the family will have no other restrictive covenant in place.
So, why would you look your employee in the face who qualifies and not direct them to the source to apply for this money, get out of that rental property, own your own home, it's an investment, and feel good about being a city employee? Not only is it, I mean, it's available to the entire Columbus, Georgia community. So, yes, let's promote it to the community. But if you're not promoting it to your own employee who you look in the face every single day, shame on you. So, I just, thank you. I don't want to prolong the meeting, but I just wanted to get that out.
All right, thank y'all. Well, hang on, Counselor Woodson?
Yes, City Manager and Rob, and Rob, I thank you. Because when I used to work at TSIS and I knew programs that were available, I gave it to my employees. Because even in the, in the public sector, even I as a leader was always asked to give money to other causes. But yet, I would see my own employees suffering there. And I'm asking them to help, to help others when they were going crazy. So, I applaud you for your leadership, Isaiah. And Rob, for you to take a step back and look at our own family, you know, within the government. Because they are suffering and we can't pay them what some of them deserve and more. And the way the economy has gone, I applaud you, I really do. I thank God for your leadership and for you being here and for you to letting us know today. Because our citizens need to know, our government employees need to know that we care about them. And you're demonstrating that by telling them, don't be afraid to apply, this money is yours. And so, I just wanted to take that moment to say that. Because, you know, there's so many great things happening. And I want our employees to know that we care about them. Because I used to, I used to help my employees and it was against policy and I did it anyway. Because, you know, it was just the fact that you're asking them to give, but they barely have what they're gonna put on the table. There were times I would do lunch because I knew two or three of my employees did not have lunch, but I didn't want to embarrass them, so I did the whole section for lunch. So, again, thank you. It's amazing what you're doing. And Ms. Chair, you already contacted Reverend Powell, I was sitting here, and he will be giving you a call.
Thank you all. Appreciate your time today.
Thank you, Cheryl. All right, next is Mr. Timothy Carter, representing Kings Ridge Subdivision regarding a petition for permanent gate closure. Mr. Carter, thank you, sir, for your patience. And you'll have five minutes from the time you state your name and your address, sir.
Thank y'all for having me. My name is Timothy Carter and I live at sixty-seven forty-four Mitchell Drive, Columbus, Georgia. And I live in the King Ridge subdivision. What I have before the council here is a petition from the members or from the homeowners in the King Ridge subdivision. And we're requesting that the gate on Tamara Drive adjacent to King Ridge subdivision be permanently closed. The park itself has no real benefit or living benefits for the citizens in a King Ridge subdivision. You know, I talked with all those citizens, none of them visit the park. Just like Congressman Tucker who go to Lake Bottom, we go to other parks. Because King Ridge have, used to be a family park, but it has morphed into a park now where gang members where gang members frequent, and there's nothing there but mayhem, mischief, and murder. So, we're requesting that this park, that gate that leads into Carver Park and exit out of, I mean, uh, exit out of Carver Park into King Ridge Subdivision be permanently closed. You know, when they leave the park and they drive through our neighborhood, they throwing out their bill bottles, their trash, you know, they speeding out in the house, they speeding down the, uh, speeding out of the community with their loud music, because they have no disregard for the community itself. The park itself is in a state of disarray, you know? I heard y'all talk about, uh, Shirley B. Winston, the activities they having at Shirley B., Shirley B. Winston, that's great, that's kudos to them. No type of activities like that happens in Carver Park. It's an eyesore. And it's, it's sad, it's sad that it has fallen to such a dis- a state of disarray. I used to go and walk through Carver Park, I used to jog through Carver Park, but I'm afraid to do that now. And it, it, it's shameful, that we, we, we have a nice park in the back of our residence that we don't frequent. And, you know, we have, we have wildlife that flies in into the lake. And one, one Saturday, it was so much ruckus in the park that the wildlife, the geese, they didn't fly into the park, 'cause it was so much noise. They were landing in the community, not knowing what to do. And so, we have this petition, and we petition the council to close that gate.
All right, thanks, sir. Councilor Tucker?
Um, yes, thank you for coming, Mr. Carter, with the petition. And I wanna thank, um, City Manager and Council for previously approving, one, the gate to be put up, um, because of the incidents that were occurring, um, in reference to, you know, a, a few murders that we had in the park. Um, so, I just wanna thank the City Manager, um, and our, um, Director of Parks and Rec, Holly, um, for, Holly Broader, for actually being proactive in addressing some of the issues that we were having. We did, and I'm not sure if we have changed any of the times or anything. Um, we did create an ordinance now that the City Manager can, um, make adjustments at, at any time when it's dealing with public health or public safety in our parks. Um, the park is closed at 7:00 PM. We have an officer that comes out and closes both gates. I do know exactly what you're talking about, 'cause I've talked to Deandra Bradley. She wanted, um, to start a neighborhood watch in that area. So, while you all was taking petition, I hope that y'all was taking, you know, a actual petition to start the neighborhood watch as well.
We are.
Um, and that would be, uh, uh, something good. If we could permanently close that gate, um, that's something that we would have to discuss, um, with council, 'cause right now, it closes at 7:00 PM and opens at 7:00 AM. And I'm not sure if it's still closed on Saturday and Sunday, but I'm thinking that it's still closing Sat- it's still closing Saturday and Sunday. We're, we're not open on Saturday and Sunday at all, and no one's driving through that park on Saturday and Sunday because of the actions that we've taken on council. Now, we can look into, as I was saying with, um, City Manager, permanently closing that ba- back gate, 'cause I have asked for that, um, also in the past. Um, we can look into that part, because I do understand, um, the issues, especially with safety and some of the incidents. And I keep saying Deandra, because her house is right towards the back of the park, and they were shooting, and she has bullet holes in the back of her home. So, I do, I am aware. But also, I wanna say this, I want us to change, um, the narrative, because Carver Park has some great things that goes on. Um, the Director of Carver Park, um, is Courtney Mason. We have senior citizens, events almost every day, from 11 o'clock to 1 o'clock, senior citizens come over there. They do exercise events, they do, um, arts and craft and other things. We also have basketball at the park. In October, we had, um, a drive-through, um, spook tackler type event, a trunk or tree. I mean, it was a huge success. We had, um, CPD out there, the sheriffs, fire department, other counselors. We have good things going on in Carver Park. And if we keep saying that it's nothing going on, then that's, that's what we're putting out there. You know how they say the power is in your tongue? You know, if we keep saying that, then that's, that's what's gonna be put out there. But this is the facts. Crime has been, uh, brought down in Carver Park. We don't have a lot of shooting on Saturday and Sunday like we did. You don't have the riffraff coming through your neighborhood on the weekends, because that park is closed. Unfortunately, we do have issues that we have to address. We do need more activities, but we do also have activities. We do, and we need to support our park. I, I, and I'm gonna say the reason why I went to Lake Bottom, 'cause my daughter goes to school over here, and I'm trying to keep her active, but we go to Carver Park a lot, a lot. I appreciate that part, and a lot of other people appreciate that part. And I get a lot of phone calls, because people want the park to be open on, um, Saturday and Sunday. They asked to call Councilor Barnes, and they was upset with me for closing the park on Saturday and Sunday. So, you have those who want the park open on the weekends, and those that I'm, I'm making sure that I'm taking care of, those citizens that are within that surrounding area, to make sure your voice is being heard, and your, basically, your demands are being, um, addressed in, in safety, 'cause I am concerned. But we do have things, positive things, that's going on in that park.
I, I request just to have that gate closed.
So...
Uh, and, and so, Mr. Mayor, um, um, I'd like to, um, I, I don't know, I haven't seen the petition or how many people in, on the petition or whatever, but, um...
We have four to six homes and four to four signatures.
Okay. So, so, Mr. Mayor and to Councilor Tucker, um, um, I, I would, um, I would just request that, um, you allow me to, um, close that gate, not the park, but that gate. And still, the weekends will stay the same, but the, obviously, the gate would be closed, and then allow me to work with the mayor and you, Councilor Tucker, and any citywide counselor, to, to take a look at, uh, operations of the park and going forward.
Yeah, we, I mean, like I said, we do need some things, but there's some positive stuff going on. I want us to make sure that. But I, I'm gonna ask, um, make a motion that we, um, close the back gate of the park permanently.
I'll second that.
Well, and that, and that's the, the, the one that I'm talking about. Um, but, but I would ask that you allow us to close it temporarily until we get together and figure out, you know, how...
A permanent solution.
Yeah, yeah, and about the whole park.
Yeah.
And then come back, and, and, and I think ultimately, it should be closed off to that neighborhood, it would be my feelings, but I would say, do it now until we come back.
Yeah, and I did wanna, I did wanna bring up something, um, that I, I think is true, and I'm not sure, and I'm gonna ask you, but is Carver Park the only one that has two gates? Like a in- entrance and an exit? 'Cause all the other parks, I mean, not Lake Bottom, 'cause that's open, but all the other parks only have one central entrance to the parks, is that true?
Well, at Flat Rock, they have an entrance and a...
Okay.
Exit, so I can't answer the question, but, but, you know...
Deputy Director Goodwin said he has two, so the only ones that have two is Heath and Carver Park. I was just asking, because that was one of the, um, questions that the citizens over in your community asked, was, you know, basically, why Carver Park has two and no other, you know, um, parks, but Heath...
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that it shouldn't be done permanently, but I don't know that you should make the decision today, I would close it...
Wanna do a study.
And then, once you come back with the bigger picture...
So, I'm, I'm amended, that we, um, temporarily close that, that back gate, um, until we complete the study.
Uh, Councilor Thomas is next.
I would request that, uh, as we are looking at this, uh, issue, that we involve, uh, not only some of the citizens in that area, but that we involve the Columbus Police Department, uh, the Sheriff's Office, uh, all of those folks who may have that sort of, um, oversight of the park, to make sure that we are not, um, doing something that will, uh, impede their ability to keep these, uh, keep these streets safe. Um, I, I think that if we were to, um, pass the original motion today, that it would be, um, too early to do that, uh, that we need to take a, a real good look at it and make sure that, um, we're doing the right thing. And, and as the City Manager said, it may be the right thing, but we need to make sure that we are not unintentionally impeding other, uh, other parts of, of the service. And it may be that we may wanna take a look at more than just Carver Park, that there may be other parks that may, we may wanna take a look at and see where we are. And so, the City Manager, Mr. Mayor, could bring back to us, uh, a recommendation at a, uh, at a later meeting.
Yeah, I, you know, the only thing I'll say is, I know that to address this, we had given the City Manager that authority, and I think he's on notice now from the counselor in that district, that she'd like that looked at. So, I think we could probably expect a report coming back and then react based on that report as generated by the district counselor.
You know, and, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Thomas's point, you know, uh, I would definitely consult Fire EMS, because we don't want an ambulance trying to get in there from the backside, because that's the fastest entrance to rescue someone that may be in distress or whatever, and you, and gotta go all the way back around. So, you know, we'll make sure that even when we close it, until we come back, that Fire EMS will, and, and Public Safety will have access through that gate. No one else would, but they would.
All right, uh, Councilor Crabbe?
Thank you. Um, Mr. City Attorney, doesn't this, um, City Manager already have the authority to close that gate in the amendment that we, um, in the ordinance that we had created about these gates, um, being closed? He, if he choo... I think he does.
I think it's in that ordinance where he's already, we don't have to make a motion or anything, because we've already given him that authority in the ordinance.
I think that authority exists right now, and I think, based on the referral from the district counselor, uh, the City Manager will bring back a report on it, and we'll have, and we'll have consulted with all of those organizations, Public Safety and the individuals that have brought the information up.
Well, we'll, we'll, I see that there's consensus that even if it's not there, we'll go ahead and make the decision to close off the back gate, and, and then I'll tell you, if it's not there, you need to formalize it.
Councilor Woodson?
So, um, we're waiting, we're waiting to see if the City Manager has, oh, he's ready to speak. I see, 'cause I was gonna say something about the motion.
Okay. No, what, did you hear it? There we go, hang on.
Yeah, we amended the ordinance, uh, and now it says that the general rule is it's unlawful to enter into the parks between the hours of 11:00 PM and 5:00 AM, except for those activities supervised, scheduled by Department of Parks and Rec. City Manager, in consultation with the Chief of Police or Department of Public Health, may issue administrative orders closing any specific park or playground for additional hours in the event public safety or public health concerns warrant such closure.
So, the, so in that case, you, we don't need the vote, because you already have the authority in that ordinance to go ahead and take that. So, I withdraw my second, because there's no need for us to take a vote. You already have that authority, City Manager. You wanna withdraw your motion?
All right, Councilor Tucker?
I withdraw, but I will ask that we actually, um, institu- institute that as soon as possible. And not, you know, prolong it, like, just keep it, keep it closed.
And, and if the clerk does not have that petition, I wish you would...
Give it to the lady back there.
Okay, you have it, okay.
But again, I, I just wanna thank you, um, because this is what, what we call citizen engagement, and we need this type of engagement. We need to know what we need to do from you all. So, I appreciate you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right, that's, uh, that completes our public agenda, and we'll move on to the City Manager's agenda, and, and it may wanna call the Judge, Judge D'Antonio up here.
Yes, uh, Judge, if you would come on up, we'll go right to Judge D'Antonio. And I know the Finance Director is in, in the back, and will speak to why he's here. And Judge, if you don't mind, we'll let the Finance Director speak to, uh, you know, we require, um, elected officials, department heads, to come to council when they are going to exceed their budget, and that's why we're here with Judge D'Antonio today.
Uh, good afternoon. Um, as the City Manager mentioned, um, the probate judge, Judge Mark D'Antonio, is here pursuant to ordinance 13 dash, um, 39, that says that if a department or elected office, um, will exceed their current budget appropriations, they have to come before counsel and request additional appropriations. And the judge is here, obviously, um, he can answer any questions that you might have in terms of, um, uh, the request, but the request in terms of what we'll need, what we, uh, think we'll need to end out the rest of FY22 is about $5,000. So, I know it's not a lot, and, um...
Can I just make the motion?
This is a motion, second, to approve the, uh, the additional funding. Uh, any, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Well, I do wanna actually take a moment to talk about something that, I'm, I'm happy to be here, and I actually, I kinda feel if I'm over my budget, I probably should go last, a little bit of a punishment, so to speak. Um, one thing that was mentioned earlier today, when I was excited to see the legislators here, um, part of my budget overruns often involve guardian ad litem fees and attorney's fees, and where that comes down is, I sometimes interfere with people's basic civil rights, especially if you're, say, at the Bradley Center, and it's been determined that you're a danger to yourself or others to be released from the Bradley Center. You have a right to counsel, uh, before, well, and appear before me and tell me why you shouldn't have to stay longer. Uh, I have no control over how many people will be involuntarily committed at the Bradley Center or West Central Georgia Regional Hospital, and so, that does affect my budget. Last, in FY, in with FY22, I asked for $60,000, I was given $49,940. I didn't fight that, because I figured, well, I'll just be back here at this time to talk about it. With the expansion of the Bradley Center, I will continue to have more involuntary psychiatric commitment hearings. So, uh, it's just gonna be a reality, you may see me again here next year at this time. Uh, one other exciting thing I did wanna tell you all about that came out of the Georgia Legislature this year, and it was referenced a little bit, it's, uh, House Bill 1013, also known as the, uh, Mental Health Parity Act, that Governor, that, uh, Speaker Ralston pushed through. As part of that, there will be five assisted outpatient treatment commitment, uh, programs funded through the state. We, right now, I actually, I think some of you know, I'm probably the most aggressive judge in the state in enforcing outpatient treatment to prevent people from ending up back in the jail or back in the hospital. And we have a small grant with the Department of Behavioral Health, uh, to start a pilot, uh, assisted outpatient treatment program, but I hope that will be expanded, and I wanna work with, uh... that will be expanded, and I want to work with counsel and with all of the other, with law enforcement and other agencies to see if we can do more to expand mental health treatment in order to, to free up jail resources and other resources. But I, I wanted to take this opportunity since guardian ad litem fees are one of the fees that I usually run over budget and have no control over. But I do appreciate counsel spending the time, and I do appreciate you all listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you for your patience. Did you, Swifton, did you have anything? Okay. All right, I think that's it.
No. You've already taken the vote, right?
We have taken the vote. I believe we did.
So, Miss, Miss Mayor, first on my agenda, had to do with the Health and Wellness Center. The lease agreement that we have was us-
Motion approved from Mayor Pro Tem, second from councillor Garrett. Any discussion on this item? All, please cue it and councillors, you register your votes.
And, and Mayor-
Madam Clerk, councillor Huffin Davis.
And let me just say that included in this, you've authorized us to give notice to them, the lease assignee, that we do not intend to renew the agreement. We're paying $2,914, including utilities, a month. And with the purchase of the Sonovas building that will be City Hall, we've had conversation with you about moving the Health and Wellness Center into that facility and not paying rent any longer. And so this lease expires November fifteen, this year, 2022. And what this would do is allow us to go on a month-to-month extension with this lease agreement through May thirty-one, 2023, which is when we anticipate our new City Hall, at least part of it, would be ready for the Health and Wellness Center. Just wanted to be clear on that.
All right, councillor Crabbe?
Thank you. Is it at all possible for them to temporarily move into the Virginia College Building where we wouldn't have to pay rent?
There, there's not enough space. The, the space that we had left there was upstairs that we did not finish. And as part of that project where we renovated, and so, and, and I believe we, we've allowed the elections office, we put air conditioning-
Right, okay.
Stored some of the machines in there, I believe.
And she's saying the Health Department is now using the rest of what's left up there. Yeah. So number two would be sanitary sewer easement.
Motion, motion approval from councillor Barnes, and I think a second from councillor Garrett on the, on item two. Any discussion? All right, please cue it.
And councillor Garrett, I know this is one you had been working on and for some time. I told, yeah.
All right, councillors Huffin and Davis vote positively as well.
Oh, yeah, well, several did. And the mayor asked me yesterday, what took so long? You know, I told him, well, the government sometimes turn, turns slow, you know, but we got it done. The next item is lease and lease purchases.
Motion approved from councillor Woodson, second from the Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cue it. Councillor Reggie votes.
Number-
This, this was three.
I'm sorry. I, I said number four, lease purchases. Let me go back to three. I'm sorry about that. That's a Georgia trauma commission. It's a grant, $11,978, no match required. That's number three. That's what you should be voting on now.
Okay. And that's what they voted on, I believe.
Okay.
Oh, you haven't. Bruce, you'll cue it. Then that council can vote. And Davidson Huff both voted yes.
And, and the next one has to do with the golf course and equipment they need.
Motion to approve the lease and purchase of equipment for the golf course. All, any discussion? Hearing none, please cue it for vote. Councillor Reggie votes. Davidson Huff both vote yes, so that's unanimous. Mr. Oren, thank you for being here.
Okay. And, and then I have purchases, Mayor, contract extension for geotechnical and environmental.
All right, there's a motion to approve items A through D and the purchases. Are there any that anyone would like pulled or further discussion? Hearing none, I think we'll need a voice vote. I know we can cue it. All right, register your votes, please. Davis and Huff say yes. And if you'd walk through those, please.
Yeah, and B is a Ford Expedition for Information Technology. You know, they transport all this computer equipment all over the city and, and that's a Ford Explorer. And C would be side loader refuse trucks. Option one cabin chassis. And we are approving forty side loader refuse trucks. And the unit price, a hundred and sixty thousand eight twenty-eight, total price, six point four million dollars. And these refuse trucks are federally funded project, is a federally funded project, and will be purchased from, through the American Rescue Plan ARP dollars. That's what these dollars are, ARP dollars. Just want to be clear. And then D would be a change order one for Columbus Dragonfly Trail. And I want to be clear on this, that this change, you know, we've talked to you about the Gabian restoration and the walls that are failing on the Riverwalk from along, from the Zipland Tower at Eleventh and Bay to the Dilliam Street Bridge. And so the work is intended to stabilize existing Gabian walls to prevent further erosion and to enhance the surrounding landscape. And so we wanted you to know that we're taking care of that. And so those are the purchases. And then I've got three more updates. One, we spoke to you about during the budget review last week, tax assessors office update. And then the next one, we shared with you at the budget meeting on indigent care. We want to share that with the public. And then the final one would be the T-Splas update that you've heard numerous times. But going back to the indigent care, you heard Representative Smyrie and the delegation in their delegation report this morning tell you that they passed that legislation as requested. And so after they passed it and the governor signed it on the April eighteenth, is when we started our process of moving things forward. You'll hear more about that in this update. I'm going to call Suzanne Whitenhouse to the podium for the tax assessors update.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel, Mr. Hughley, for allowing me to stop in and just discuss what's going on with the digest and the timeline. In 2020, we decided not to make any changes to the digest for COVID reasons because we weren't really sure what the true effect of COVID on the digest was. So we left it alone for twenty and twenty-one. And now that life is returning to normal, it's time to do the standard market adjustments. And we were running a little bit behind. We lost a couple people in our office due to COVID. And we, we had some turnover. And so we were a little late getting all of our sales into the system. So we finally finished getting all the 2021 sales into the system. And we started the market adjustments and ran into some hiccups and have had to have some refreshes done in our T, our test environment. We, we run two environments. One's a test environment, one's a production environment. And when we go to make adjustments, we do those in the test environment. We ran into a few hiccups. We had to get some refreshes done. It basically threw us about two weeks off of our schedule. So instead of notices going out on the seventeenth of May, we're looking at having notices go out on the thirty-first of May, which would mean that the appeal period won't end until the fifteenth of July. And that means that the Tax Commissioner's Office won't be able to get the digest to the Department of Revenue until sometime around the twenty-ninth of July, which is going to put bills going out around the fifteenth of August, which would make first payments October fifteenth. So just wanted to come in and explain kind of what was going on, that we are a couple of weeks behind. And we're hoping not to have these issues next year and that we get back on track for next year. But we are about two weeks late this year.
Okay. And I, I do want the finance director to just comment on whether that impacts us in terms of collections. It does not, but I need her to, to say that. And she will be here in, in just a second. But in the meantime, Mayor, there may be. I think I've been working at you hard. So she, she talked about the first notices and collect fifteenth and of October and then December first. Does this in any way impact our collections, you know, in the year before it, it did, and we had to do a tax anticipation note and go through that process?
It does in terms of our ability to maintain the same dates. And, and, and in all honesty, with thirty-first being here, that's most certainly going to change the schedule that, tentative schedule that I sort of laid out last week. We're going to have to circle back with the Tax Commissioner's Office. If it was, if, if they could go out, if the notices could go out on the twenty-third, the week of the twenty-third-
No, no, they, they can't. And this is, this was the timeline that we had set up with the Tax Commissioner's Office, the revised timeline. Because what it is, is they'll go to the printer the week of the twenty-third-
Okay.
For printing on the thirty-first. You will still get your data so you can do your PT thirty-two.
Also, we're good then. Okay, so in terms of the schedule, if, if, if they go to the printers the week of the twenty-third, then the schedule that was put out, laid out sort of verbally last week, we'll go ahead and bring that back on the thirty-first in terms of adjustments for the, the meeting dates. But I know that wasn't your question, Mr. City Manager, you asked about the timeline in terms of a tax, a tax anticipation note. And I believe the only impact will be the, the, the timeline for the first installment. With everything being pushed back to two weeks, we would likely have the first installment pushed back by two weeks, and the second installment would likely still be due the first of December.
And that's not going to interrupt our revenue flow or operations?
Now, this is why we have the fund balance for times like this. So, no.
But we're good.
We're good.
Okay.
We're good.
So I, I just wanted to be clear about that, Miss Mayor.
Okay. Well, no real financial implications. And as the finance director pointed out, the fund balance is, is not a static amount of money that just sits in the account drawing interest. It's actually, it's actually used in our, our cash flow operations. So towards the time when our revenues come in from, from property taxes, abnormal taxes, we do utilize some of the fund balance. And then that's replenished by those, those, those receipts coming in. So we'll be-
All right, Mayor, well, I'm, we're good with that.
Thank you.
So next I have indigent care update from Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge. And then she will also do the T-Splas update.
Good afternoon, Mayor and counsel, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney. This is the presentation that you heard during the budget review session, but want to make sure that everyone has the information in the public. Again, we are coming out of a thirty-year agreement with the Medical Center Hospital Authority. That agreement will expire on June thirtieth of twenty-two. There was a section in the charter that would need to be amended for anything different than the three mills. So that passed City Council with Resolution three fifty-four twenty-one in October of 2021 to request the local legislative delegation to put forward that local act. And as you heard this morning, that was one of the updates that Dean Smyrie provided. The House did pass that on, I need to clear this screen really quick. Somebody is, there we go. So the House passed that on March eleventh of twenty-two. The Senate passed that on March sixteenth of twenty-two. Went to the governor's office, and that was signed by the governor on April the eighteenth of twenty-two. And so in the recommended budget that was presented to council on April the twenty-sixth includes up to two point five mills of indigent healthcare at twelve point five million dollars. And so what that means is that we will be looking at a resolution, and I think it was decided during the budget review session, a resolution wouldn't be necessary as we move forward with this RFP process. That will be going out in May-June time period. And that is to issue an RFP for healthcare services for indigents as well as other county healthcare services, which would include occupants of the jail. That's for those who have inpatient and outpatient services outside of what is provided at the jail through their medical contract. These services include inpatient, outpatient, hospital care, x-rays, laboratory, primary medical care, pharmaceuticals, mental healthcare services. And so as the budget process moves forward, those revenues on this millage would be collected. Those would be in October and December, as you just heard from the finance director. And so this RFP will be awarded either one contract or multiple contracts. Our expectation is it will be multiple contracts for different types of services to provide healthcare services for our inmates. And so that RFP, and I've heard already from a couple of providers who are interested in providing services, making sure that everyone who's interested gets registered as a vendor. So if they can reach out, we'll make sure that they're on the list to receive the RFP and so that they can respond to that RFP. And happy to answer any additional questions. I know there was some conversation at the budget review session last week.
And so agreements, this was a thirty-year agreement, agreement. It comes to, it expires on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two this year. And, and so we're going to do up to two and a half mills. And, and it'll basically through the RFP be open. And organizations like Piedmont, St. Francis, Valley Healthcare, Paschal Institute, others-
Mercy Mill.
It could, will all have an opportunity to be a part of this indigent care process. And these are going to be reimbursable.
Yes, they would be reimbursable agreements.
Agreements. And the agreements would be one-year agreements, right, renewable-
Right. The way that our, the way we're expecting the RFP to be structured is that they would be one-year agreements that could be renewed each year if satisfactory services have been provided to those indigent residents. So it will be a, probably a five-year, one-year agreement with four one-year renewals is how we typically structure contracts to make sure that they're providing the services that we-
And, and the way it's being structured, or will be structured in the RFP, it will allow us to have a, a higher level of oversight than we've had in the past and a higher level of accountability for services rendered delivered.
That's correct. You know, one of the, the things that we have in the existing agreement doesn't provide for that level of accountability. We want to make sure that we're serving the most residents that we can that meet the qualifications to be indigent and to provide that reporting and that information back to this council and to the public.
Yeah, a lot, a lot has changed over thirty years, to say the least. And, and so what this does, in my mind anyway, is it creates opportunities for a wider array of medical services that may not have been considered earlier, mental health, counseling, things of that nature. And it also gives us an opportunity, depending on how many make proposals, to perhaps expand the distribution points for some of the- to perhaps expand the distribution points for some of this care. So, you know, bottom line, I think it has an opportunity to increase the amount of medical care that's available and increase availability. And at the same time, do it at a little bit less cost to the citizens of Columbus, Georgia, while not scrimping at all on what we're providing for those that qualify for the indigent care program.
That's right, Mayor. And just to kind of, if someone wonders going from three meals down to 2.5 meals, how that's going to impact the level of care service in a growing city where the population has grown. You know, to put it in perspective, three meals thirty years ago, three meals, the value of three meals was 5.5 million, five and a half million dollars thirty years ago. That was the value of three meals. Today, the value of three meals is $15 million. So you can see that while we have grown in population and over the thirty years, there's been a growth or an increase in the value of three meals. And so we will be able to do what we need to do with indigent care with up to 2.5 meals. And so we just wanted to share that, Ms. Mayor. And so if there are no questions, we'll move on to our next...
No questions.
So again, this is a presentation that you've heard. This is the transportation special purpose local option sales tax. It will be on the ballot May twenty-fourth. It is the last question on the ballot. This is a regional sales tax. We are part of the River Valley region, which is made up of sixteen counties. So this tax and this vote is determined by a collective amount of votes for all sixteen counties, not specifically for Muskogee County. It's for all sixteen counties. So we could fail in one of those counties and still pass collectively. And then all sixteen counties would be required to levy that sales tax for this ten-year period of time. We currently have a T-Splosh where there are twenty-three projects in the region for a total investment list of 410 million. Three are under construction and seventeen of those projects have been completed. This is the timeline for the existing T-Splosh. It expires December thirty-first of this year. If the new T-Splosh passes, it will start January first. So there would be no change in the total sales tax rate. If the new T-Splosh passes, it would continue this existing T-Splosh for an additional period of time. So in the existing T-Splosh from 2012, these are the projects that were part of that T-Splosh. The River Walk at $10 million, that project has been completed. The Follow Me Trail at three and a half million, that project has been completed. US-27 Custer, a $20 million project, is an interchange. That project has been completed. Metra, 22.4 million for additional services at Metra, capital replacement. That is in progress. The Spiderweb Project is under construction. This is a $40 million project. We should be bidding out the actual bridge by the end of this year. The Buena Vista I-185 Road Interchange or the Diverging Diamond, that is under construction at this time. This is a project that GDOT is managing for the city. Also, the Casita Road Interchange is under design. Right-of-way acquisition has started. This is a project that GDOT will be managing for the city as well. There are two projects that we share with Harris County. One is State Road 219. This has recently been completed, so this project is done. There's a few minor things that they're finishing up, but this project was managed by GDOT and is completed at this time. And then the US-27 North Veterans Parkway into Harris County, this is under design. So also, as part of a T-Splosh, there is what's called discretionary funds. So seventy-five percent of the funds collected go towards projects. Twenty-five percent of the funds go to discretionary, back to the individual counties. Each county is, receives an allocation. These are the projects that have been completed or allocated with our T-Splosh dollars. We have collected through FY '21, 22.475 million. And these are the projects that have been completed, again, or are allocated. Resurfacing, twenty-seven miles of resurfacing at 6.75 million. The Boxwood Boulevard Bridge replacement was completed with T-Splosh discretionary funds. Binning Drive Bridge, Claradon Bridge, Morris Road Bridge. The Warm Springs Road Culvert was also done with T-Splosh discretionary funds. This one is almost complete. Victory Drive Improvements, Traffic Calming, the Double Churches Park Parking, Salmon Road Signal, and these three signals, Salmon Road, River Road JR Allen Signal and Victory Drive, 10th Avenue Signal. These funds have been allocated towards these projects. We're waiting on materials, which we expect in July for these projects to be completed. The Reese Road Bridge was partially funded with T-Splosh discretionary. We've used almost $2 million for matching funds for expansion of the Dragonfly Trail Network. Sidewalks, the Infantry Road and Trail, the match for Z-230 funds was from T-Splosh discretionary. The mats for Motts Green was also from this funding source, as well as guardrail replacement. So out of the 22 million, 19 million has been allocated. And each year, we allocate the funds through the annual budget process. For the 2023, the new T-Splosh that's on the ballot, May twenty-fourth, the final investment list is 664, or the final projection is 664 million. Seventy-five percent is allocated to projects, twenty-five percent to discretionary funds. GDOT does manage the program for the region. So there's an administrative fee and they've also provided for inflation in this calculation. The present value of the investment list for projects specifically is just under 400 million. GDOT is also contributing, if this T-Splosh does pass, $159 million towards the region for a total project list for our region of 559 million. So these are the projects specifically in Muskogee County. It's a total project list of 303 million. And I want to walk through these because I want to make sure, I know you've heard this presentation many times. I want to make sure the citizens understand the projects that's included on this list and they're in bands. So Band One is the first three years of the T-Splosh. These projects would start in 2023 through 2025. The River Walk repaving, this is to resurface portions of the River Walk from the Trade Center to Oxbow and also from City Mills North to the North Highland Dam. Steammill Road Improvements, 22.5 million. This is from Buena Vista Road to the end of the road. This is a widening project from two to three lanes. Also with sidewalks, multi-use trails, streetscapes, and there would be a pedestrian bridge over I-185. And almost all of these projects include sidewalks and the multi-use trail. And you'll hear me repeat that. So it's an expansion of our Dragonfly Trail Network throughout our community. Whitesville Road widening from two to three lanes from Whittle Cedar Williams Road, also with intersection improvements and/or roundabouts and sidewalks and multi-use trail. Buena Vista Road Corridor Improvements, this is widening from two and four lanes to three lanes from Wynton Road to Elders Road. And again, with sidewalks and the multi-use trail. South Lumpkin Road Improvements from Victory Drive to the Roundabout with sidewalks and the multi-use trail. University Avenue Road Diet and Streetscapes, this is from Manchester Expressway to Macon Road. This would be a reduction from four to two lanes, or actually three lanes. There'd be a turn lane as well with pedestrian and bicycle facilities. Thirteenth Avenue, Seventeenth Street, and Linwood, this would be Roundabout at this intersection. Liberty Theater Block Enhancement, this would be along Eighth Avenue from, and Seventh Avenue from Eighth Street to Ninth Street. The Fifth Avenue Corridor Connector, this is a multi-use path between Fourteenth Street and Tenth Street. This is a connection. Andrews Road Improvements from Andrews Road from Buena Vista Road to Casita Road, a widening project from two to three lanes, again with sidewalks and multi-use trail. And Brennan Road Improvements from Buena Vista Road to Casita Road, again, a widening project from two to three lanes with sidewalks and multi-use trail. These are all the projects that would happen with, start to happen within the first three years of the T-Splosh, which is Band One. We also have projects in Band Two. Band Two includes the Second Avenue Improvements from Manchester Expressway to Talboton, also including the multi-use trail, sidewalks, and landscaping. JR Allen at Schaumburg and Blackman, this is east and westbound ramp improvements. Forest Road Widening, 15.4 million. And this is from Macon Road to Woodruff Farm Road from two to three lanes, also with a Roundabout at Trinity and Forest. Again, this project includes sidewalks and the multi-use trail. Morris Road Improvements from Buena Vista Road to Forest Road, this is a widening project from two to three lanes with the sidewalks and multi-use trail. Casita Road Widening from two to three lanes. There would be a Roundabout at 10th Avenue and North Lumpkin, or from 10th Avenue all the way down to the new Roundabout with a Roundabout at North Lumpkin and Twenty-third and also at Brown and Andrews. Again, this project includes sidewalks and multi-use trail. And then we're into Band Three. Williams Road Widening, this would be from two to three lanes from Veterans Parkway to I-185. Double Churches Road Improvements from Veterans Parkway to River Road, multi-use trail and sidewalks and intersection improvements along Double Churches and Whitesville Road. County Line Mahaffey Central Church Road, this is a shared project with Harris County. This would include interchange and intersection improvements and widening the bridge, also widening Mahaffey from two to three lanes and to provide pedestrian and bicycle facilities. And then Bull Creek Dragonfly Trail Connector, this would lead from Rigdon Park to Woodruff Farm. Rigdon Road to Woodruff Farm Soccer Complex, this is a nine and a half mile trail connection to our Dragonfly Trail Network. Also included is $25 million for Metra for continued enhancements to our public transit system and also 25 million for passenger terminal expansion at the Columbus Airport. So the final investment list is 303 million. The estimate for the discretionary funds that would come specifically to Muskogee County is 36.5 million for a total transportation project list of 339 million dollars. When you couple that with the existing T-Splosh, the discretionary funds, the project list that's included in the T-Splosh for 2023, as well as discretionary funds for the new T-Splosh, if it were to pass, includes $626 million of transportation enhancements to Muskogee County that otherwise would take years for Muskogee County to, as we allocate about $3 million a year for road improvement projects, a lot of these projects would not be done. We had a series of public meetings to provide this information. We've been sharing this information at council meeting for the last couple of months to make sure that the citizens are informed of this question that will be on the ballot, that will be their decision as to whether we move forward with these projects. And it will be on the ballot May twenty-fourth.
And I guess what money we do get from DOT, if this, if we didn't have a T-Splosh, our contribution will be a little bit greater than it has, than it has been this past ten years.
That's correct.
All right, any questions of Deputy City Manager? Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes my agenda today.
All right. Thank you, sir. We'll move on to the Clerk's agenda. Madam Clerk?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. For the Clerk's agenda, item one, our minutes of various boards to be received.
Motion, second, to receive the minutes. Any discussion? You want to cue those, Bruce, or? All right, we'll just do a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, they're received.
Item two are board appointments. Mr. Mayor, we have your appointment for the Pension Fund Employees Board of Trustees. If you will recall, at the last meeting, Ms. Hollingsworth was appointed and confirmed to serve another term. However, since that time, we have received word that she has some other obligations at work.
Yes, ma'am. I'll bring you, I'll bring you a replacement at the next meeting.
Thank you. Next, we have an appointment. This is the City Manager's appointment and it is ready for confirmation for 457 Deferred Compensation Board. The seat for is totally, the City Manager is nominating the Public Works Director, Drill Short.
Motion, second, to confirm Ms. Short. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Ms. Short is confirmed.
Next, we have council appointments that are ready for confirmation. The 457 Deferred Compensation Board, Ms. Rhonda Davis was nominated.
Motion, confirm Ms. Davis. Motion, second, to confirm Ms. Davis. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? She's confirmed.
For the Board of Family Children's Services, Pastor Johnny Flakes.
Motion, second, approve Pastor Flakes. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed.
Next, the Columbus Golf Course Authority, Mr. William Roundtree was nominated to serve another term. He may be confirmed.
I would like to move Mr. Roundtree, Mr. Crumpler, Davis, Jones, and Callahan.
All right, there's a motion to confirm Roundtree, Crumpler, Davis, Jones, and Callahan. Any discussion? All in favor of those reappointments, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, they're confirmed.
For the Retirees Health Benefits Committee, Mr. Thomas Baron was nominated to serve another term. He may be confirmed.
Motion to confirm Mr. Baron. Any discussion? Motion, and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Mr. Mayor, we would need to withdraw the next nomination. Ms. Esther Radcliffe has resigned from her seat. So we will bring this back at the next meeting for council to make another appointment.
Okay.
For the Valley Partnership Joint Development Authority.
Motion, approved. Counselor Walker to serve another term. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, Counselor Walker, Garrett is approved.
Okay. Also for the Valley Partnership Joint Development Authority.
Motion, second, to confirm Mr. Galbraith. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Next, for the Columbus Golf Course Authority...
Oh, I'm sorry. Hang on, we've got Mayor Protim Allen.
Regarding the position on the golf authority that's vacant, I would like to place a nomination, John Redman, who is our former auditor. He's expressed interest in serving on that. And with all the projects that Bull Creek is going to have going forward and all the projects that Oxbow will have going on, I think it's, it would be prudent for us to put someone with his skill set on there. So I'd like to add John Redman's name to the list. And Madam Clerk, would that postpone this another until the next meeting or?
No, we could move forward with the vote.
Okay, all right.
Okay. As stated by the Mayor Protim, we have added John Redman to the list. We have Mario Davis, that was nominated by Counselor Davis, and Tommy Nobles, that was nominated by Counselor Crabbe. Is the council ready to take a vote? Okay. Mayor Protim?
John Redman.
Counselor Barnes?
Mr. Davis, Madam Davis.
Counselor Crabbe?
Tommy Nobles.
Counselor Davis is nominating, I mean, is voting for Mario Davis. Counselor Garrett?
John Redman.
Counselor House?
Nobles.
Counsel Huff is also voting for Mario Davis. Counsel Thomas?
Thomas Nobles.
Counsel Tucker?
Mario, yeah, Mario Davis.
Woodson?
Tommy Nobles.
I'm sorry, Counsel Tucker, you had, what was your, I'm sorry, Counsel Thomas, what was yours?
Thomas Nobles.
Yeah, it looks like we have Mario Davis has four, Tommy Nobles has four, and Redman has two. So we would have to bring this back for the next meeting. Mr. Mayor, did I get that right?
So we wouldn't drop that lowest one?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Yes, okay. So yes, that would be, that, that is correct. We can't drop the lowest number. And that would be John Redman. He has two. And we can take the vote again. Okay. Mayor Protim Allen?
Tommy Nobles.
Mario, Counsel Barnes?
Davis.
Crabbe?
Tommy Nobles.
And Counsel Davis is for Mario Davis. Counsel Garrett?
Nobles.
Counsel House?
Nobles.
And Huff is Mario Davis. Counsel Thomas?
Nobles.
Counsel Tucker?
Davis.
Counsel Woodson?
Oh.
That should be six.
And it looks like, um.
Mr. Nobles said six.
Yes, um, Nobles has six, Tommy Nobles has six, and he may be confirmed.
Confirm confirmation. Motion second to confirm Mr. Nobles. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed.
Thank you. Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations would be listed for the next meeting. For the Board of Family Children's Services, Counsel Barnes is nominating Latasha Morse, and Counsel Crabbe is nominating Gwendolyn McIntosh. So we will bring those back for a vote tabulation. We have council district seats. Any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting. For the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, District One, Vanessa Lewis, she's not eligible to serve another term of office. We also have Dominique Williamson. This is District Nine. This is Counsel Thomas's recommendation, nomination. She is not eligible to serve another term of office. Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. For the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, Douglas McLeod Jr. and Alyssa Williams, both are eligible to serve another term of office. Have not heard back from either one. If you wanted to place their name and nomination, and then we'll get in contact with them, make sure we touch bases with them. Okay. Okay. And then Tracy Walton King is interested in serving. We have heard from her, if someone wants to place her name. No, he does not desire a reappointment. Larry Derby, that is, Kenneth Lure, he's not eligible to succeed himself. All of these are council appointments. Sharon Baker, she's an at-large member, not eligible to serve. David Goldberg has since moved out of the county. Oz Roberts, at-large member as well, not eligible to succeed. Dr. William Kendall, Fran Fluker, Orlean Bachman are all not eligible to serve another term of office. Next, we have the Valley Partnership Joint Development. The seat of Mr. Gary Jones, who has passed away, this seat is open for nominations. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, is there anything else that needs to come before this council?
No, we adjourn.
Wait, just a second. We've got Counselor Tucker.
I just wanted to say thank you to all of those that sit next to, to me on this council, and also, even though Pops is talking, and Counselor Huff. Counselor Huff helped me with ACCG, introducing me to some of the main individuals that serve on the board. And Counselor Barnes actually introduced me to Chairman Carvell Lewis, who actually serves on RVRC. At the ACCG Conference that we just had, I was nominated and elected to serve on the Board of Managers for the Consolidated, as the representative for Consolidated Governments. So I just appreciate, and actually, Counselor Thomas put it in my head that I could actually serve in that type of capacity for GMA, and ACCG actually nominated me. So I just appreciate you all for actually helping me, and it's helping us, actually. I learned some great things, and I'm able to bring back some great things. So just thank you. I just wanted to say thank you all.
Yes, ma'am. All right, Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to remind council that next Tuesday will be a budget meeting, and we will start at nine o'clock. I'm not sure what all is going to be on that agenda. To my knowledge, at this point, and be sure to underline, at this point, we do not have a department coming to present to us. So it, but it, we will start at nine o'clock next Tuesday morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel Woodson?
Yes, I would like to invite my colleagues and citizens of Columbus, Georgia, to join the Civic Center on June the eleventh. It's, it's June the eleventh, and it's prayer for the city. Different congregations are coming together, and if you know congregations that would like to participate with the climate that we are today, we need prayer. We need prayer. And different churches, different organizations are coming together on June the eleventh at the Civic Center to pray for our city. That's a good question. PM, mm-hmm. At seven PM, yes, I'm sorry. And if you know of any, if your church is, I'll, I'll put this flyer in the group chat. If you know of any of your church that might be interested in coming and praying and, and play some music to fellowship, will be appreciated, because we want this to be a unity service as a community.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. Any other business? All right, we did have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We extend adjourned.